When we get to...
I don't know, just talk about doing it.
All right, good evening, everybody, welcome. Nice crowd tonight. Suzanne, welcome back. We'll start with roll call.
Thank you, Mayor Levy. Mayor Levy?
Here.
Mayor Protem Carr?
Here.
Councilmember Case?
Here.
Councilmember Harvey?
Here.
Councilmember Labar?
Here.
Councilmember Sonia?
Here.
Councilmember Sawyer?
Here.
Thank you.
Great, thank you Suzanne. Okay, if everybody will please join me in the pledge of allegiance.
My pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, we're on agenda item number three, and before we start with appointments to the DDA, Hillary Labar has a statement.
I know that one of the DDA applicants is my father-in-law, Pete Labar, and although we don't share any financial interests or personal interests with his running for the DDA, I don't want there to be any appearance of impropriety regarding our relationship, so I've decided to recuse myself from that vote.
Thank you, Hillary.
And typically, as Councilwoman Labar knows, and that is why she's exiting the room, is that in the event of a councilperson recusing themselves, they do leave the dais and they leave the council chambers. Thank you.
Madam City Attorney, could you possibly talk about conflicts of interest that may have some other issues?
Thank you, I can make some broad statements about conflicts. Under Colorado's, under our charter, conflict is not defined, and so we are left to Colorado state law. And Colorado state law generally describes a conflict in a couple ways. The way you would expect, which is having any sort of financial interest in the matter that's before you, that you were voted on. But in addition, under Colorado law, a councilperson has a conflict if they have a private or personal interest. That is not defined by state law, but an example of that would be the example that we saw just recently with Ms. Councilwoman Labar recusing herself. And so, the charter also allows for, in the event of a question, for council as a whole to take a motion and a vote with respect to their fellow councilmembers on whether or not they have a conflict. I'm happy to address any further questions on that, are there any? Thank you.
Thank you, great, thanks very much. Okay, then we will move on to the appointments to the DDA, and I think Suzanne?
Yes, thank you Mayor Levy. As council will recall, John DeVoe resigned from the DDA, which provided an opening for the DDA. So we have one position currently open that we've been advertising on the city's website, the Facebook page, Channel 10, as council always requests we do, and we've received three applications for this opening. Before I talk about the three applications, I also want to let council know that at the end of the month, there's two terms on the DDA that are expiring also. Mary Jo Larson and Jan Wilson, their terms are up June 30th. So you'll see another advertisement that's out for those two positions. So the position that's available tonight is to fill John DeVoe's term. And we received three applications. They were from Pete Labar, Nick Pennell, and Brandy Parsons. All three of the individuals, I believe, are here this evening. They're available to speak with council and be interviewed, so council can vote and decide who they'd like to appoint.
Great Suzanne, first, can you tell me, are either Jan or Mary Jo, are they term limited, or they're just, their term is over?
Term is over.
Neither one are term limited?
That's correct. They can reapply, both of them.
Thank you, thank you. Okay, council, if it's okay with you, I think we take these one at a time in alphabetical order, and we will have our Sergeant of Arms take two that we're not going to interview out of the room. So we'll start with Pete Labar, and if Nick and Brandy could go with Kip, we'll get this process started.
Mr. Mayor, could I also ask Suzanne to explain the qualifications? Because not all, it's not a requirement for some of the DDA board members to live within the city limits.
That's correct. Thank you. I have the CRS statute here where it states that each appointed member of the board, except any member from the governing body, shall reside, be a business licy, or own real property in the downtown development district within the municipality in which the authority is located. That's CRS 3125-806. All three meet that requirement.
Great, thank you Suzanne. Thanks Carol. Okay, welcome. Pete, if you'll start, how about just name and address and why you're standing here with us today?
Pete Labar, property address that I own in the district is 750 East US Highway 24, Woodland Park 80863.
Which business is that?
It's Rare Earth Development and Investments.
Great. Tell us why after all these years, you want to be involved in the DDA?
Well, I've had interest in the DDA probably for the last two or three years, in conversations with Tanner Coy, seeing what's going on. Had, have had an interest in property in the DDA, and that would lead to some of the conversations early on. I had expressed an interest in the DDA, but didn't feel that at the time that my discussions with Tanner would be appropriate for me to apply for a DDA position, because it'd be conflicts of interest in our mine and my business partner's real estate pursuits. We no longer have an interest in a particular piece of property, so I felt that this is a good time to approach being on the board. I feel that my development background, my small business background would provide a different look at a business perspective to the board and to the authority itself.
Council, questions? Carol?
I think your background more than lends itself to the position on the DDA, and part of me is wondering why anyone would want to do that right now, but do you believe there is or could be a conflict because of the membership of your daughter-in-law and the city council?
I don't believe so. She doesn't serve on the board. I think that the board itself is representative of the entire district. Anything that would come before council would be presented most likely by the President of the Board, and would be representative of the entire Board, not a single vote or a single issue brought forward by myself.
Pete, I got a question for you. Do me a favor, characterize the way you feel DDA is operating right now, and if you were appointed, how do you see yourself being part of that process? Where do you see your biggest asset of being on this board?
Let me answer the last question first. I think my biggest asset is being able to bring disparaging groups together to find a common beneficial, mutually beneficial result. My former life in the military, you're constantly dealing with conflict resolution, I think that's helpful. I don't have, and I'll be honest with you, I haven't looked, delved deeply into the DDA's affairs, simply because up until I was learned about the opening, I've kind of, like most citizens and most business people, were too busy doing other things to look into it. I've heard, as many of us have, I've read the newspaper, I've seen the comments, I've had conversations with Tanner, and have offered suggestions, but you know, quite frankly, I'm not familiar with the lawsuit. I'm not, I know who the parties are involved, but I haven't, I haven't taken the time to delve into it, simply because there was no need for me to do so.
I guess I'll take the next question. Pete, thank you for being here.
Thank you.
Since I was on the DDA for four years, I understand the challenges, the ups and downs, the negative, the positive. I go back to, this isn't a question, this will be a statement, I go back to Neil's question about why, but you've already answered that.
Well, if I may?
If you'd like to continue, sure.
Just elaborately, just a little bit. I don't live in Woodland Park. I've been involved with the, with the school district, sat on a committee to help them work through some of the financial issues. Have been involved in, I'm President of an HOA where I live, but I can't be, I can't run for city office, not that I necessarily have any desire to do, to do that, but it gives me an opportunity to serve the community that I work in, that I've benefited from for many years. And you know, this is, this is one of those rare opportunities, I see it, that kind of fits now with my life.
Okay, so I'm going to have a two-part question here. In the application, you did put the most, what were the three most pressing issues facing the city of Woodland Park, relative to the board commission for which you are applying? You do have, and I will just say these now, so the public can hear which you've responded, housing, qualified employees, business development, and growth. And my first question is, can you, can you talk more about that in more detail?
Certainly. To have business, to have a successful business, there are several components of that, but I think primarily, you have to have people. And beds, mean heads, in businesses. And housing is something that I'm directly involved with in the, in the community. So the, the, the lack of affordable housing, and I know that has, has some bad connotations, but affordable housing to me isn't, isn't, isn't a, isn't a bad thing. You know, if we had, if we had a, an abundance of 150,000, 175,000 dollar homes in this community, we would be attracting families into the community with children. Those families and those children would help support our schools. They would help support the businesses. It's not a bad thing to be, to have property values rise and have expensive homes and collect the taxes from that, but when folks that work at Walmart, when folks that work in our service industries, when folks that, that work for the police department or school district, can't afford to live in the community that they're in, we all suffer because of it. And so, I think one of the, one of the objectives of the DDA is to look at providing housing in a mixed-use environment. You know, housing above a business. So I see that, that is, for me, that's the biggest thing. If you don't have people, businesses suffer. What were the other two?
That's okay, that's okay. Qualified employees, business development, and growth.
And so, qualified businesses just go with, with housing. How do you get, how do you get people to work when, when, you know, when I owned the Denny's business here in town? It was tough to get folks who could, who could work in the community and live in the community. We had people that would come from the Springs, because they couldn't afford to live here. So, and I think lastly, the business development, that's the primary, maybe not the primary, but an objective of the DDA, is business development within the district and in the broader, the broader boundaries of the city. So I see business development is lagging because of property taxes, because of use taxes. So all those things combined, put them together, you have, you have a, you have a disparity between what a business can provide, what businesses that may want to come into the community and be able to provide, and what they can do, given the constraints of property taxes, given the constraints of limited, limited qualified employees, or employees at all. So it's, it is, it is a dichotomy, and I think I can, I can help somewhat in, in maybe resolving that.
So my final question is, the, the design of the DDA was to give incentives to businesses to move up here, to give businesses that were up here a little help with their taxes, tax incremental financing, which I'm sure you're well aware of. What is your personal feeling about it, of these incentives?
It's a great question. I think it's one that all DDA's struggle with, and I think all citizens struggle with. You have the, you have the, the, you have the disconnect with the Gallagher Amendment and business taxes, but you also have, you also have a parallel issue with favoring a new business over an existing business. So you give an incentive to a new business to come into the DDA that may compete directly for those limited resources within, within the district. And so there is, there is a, there is a disparity when that occurs. But I feel, my view is that a rising tide lifts all boats. If you have more businesses, if you have more beds, if you have more people, all businesses are going to thrive. If we take the approach that, well, we don't want to help to incentivize a business to come into the community, and I know what happened with, with one of the businesses, I took, I took an alternative view to that, and I explained that again in conversation with Tanner. I think that overall, all businesses will do very well if we have more businesses here. And so, if we have a means of, of dealing with the disparity that Gallagher creates, then I think we should use that. And it's the one, it's the one thing that the state gives us, allows us to do, that allows those dollars, although they're still going to be paid, to give back to the businesses that are paying them. So I'm in favor of it, but with some reservations. And I think that, you know, the DDA, a balanced DDA will, will look at each individual applicant and make a decision based on, based on the input from all those members. Again, my view would be to support that in probably most cases. And in the case that was, was denied, again, I see it as encouraging, but to the DDA's benefit, you know, they're, they'll capture all of those funds, and that's beneficial to the DDA, helping to pay down debt. And I can't argue with that either. So I think, as you all face difficult choices, you know, and you make, you make the decision based on the information that you have at hand, you know, I will do the same thing. I'll make a balanced decision based on, on my, my values and my principles. Thank you very much.
Paul? No secret, I call you a friend. Basically, tiff has been answered. I have been, in my own personal opinion, character assessing of members of the DDA Board. Also trying to try what should be allowed to go through the courts in this chamber by some people, as they bring these issues up to our attention. And I have not been one to take those positions very well. What do you feel about that? If you're going to be on the DDA Board, and you're going to sit there, is it appropriate to bring these issues in that manner, this way, instead of more combative? And the DDA just being, in their own rights, being now governed by business, whereas before there were other influences involved in the DDA directing them?
It's an amber alert.
Okay.
I think Abraham, and this is a quote I've used frequently, more recently. Abraham Lincoln, and I'll paraphrase, said, "It's better for you to keep quiet and people think you a fool than open your mouth and remove all doubt." And in that light, you know, I think we all have moments that we say things that we regret. It happens in life. And I can say that I've fallen into that trap myself. I've, I've said things that I've regretted, and consequently have asked, have had to ask for forgiveness, and had asked to, and have had to rethink my thought process, or at least my approach. So, one thing I've learned, you know, and again, I'll go back to my military experiences, you grow thick skin. You know, there are all kinds of things that said, are said. Some ingest, some, some with vile and with vitriolic intent. And when that happens, you know, we, I tend to stop and just reflect on what's being said, why it's being said, and not focus on who's saying it. I think that we all, or I should say you, and the DDA Board are in the public light. And you put yourself in the public light, and you have a personal responsibility to always present yourself in a manner that doesn't put you in a position to, to have, have people look at you in a bad light. And so, you know, with, with regards to different people saying different things, I say that if you're in a, if you're in a public position, you have to rise above it. You know, the public at large, they're going to say what they want to say, but it doesn't give you cause to retaliate and, and talk back and, and lower yourself to that, to that vitriol. So, you know, that's my approach. And Paul, you are a friend, and you've seen me in a variety of different settings, and I have tried to, to do that. There are times when circumstances may get beyond me, but I think I tend to be fairly balanced and fairly calm, and, and respectful. But we're all human. So, I don't know if that answers your question?
It does. And I've sat through many meetings with you, and seen you in action. The DDA is term limited to a set amount of years. And would you be in agreement to letting the DDA just go away?
I honestly don't know the answer to that. I think that, that there may be a time when it's run its course. I think it still has another 12 years, maybe I've got that wrong, another 12 years. I think there's plenty of time to, to come to that determination. I probably won't be on the Board when that happens. Those that are on the Board, and city council will have to wrestle with that. I think right now, the DDA Board, or the DDA itself, could serve a very positive, have a very positive influence on the overall business community in the city. And I think they can serve an important role. And that's not to say that they haven't. You know, part of, part of what, what's being dealt with right now with the DDA has to do with the land exchange. And maybe some of you would say, well, the land exchange should have never taken place. But several of you might disagree and say, you know what, that was a good, that was a good deal. It was a good deal that went bad. And I can't second guess what happened, however long ago that was. I guess, what, almost 15 years, 18 years? So, you know, that's, but that's, that's the problem, is that we have, we have hindsight, and we like to judge what happened in the past without, with perfect knowledge of what's happening today. So, as far as dissolving the DDA 12 years from now, I'm, I don't have an answer. Because I don't have knowledge that we'd have 10 years from now, or 11 years from now.
Anybody else? Pete, thanks for your time.
Thank you Mayor. Thank you Council.
Thank you.
Thank you Pete.
Kip, if you'll bring in Nick Pennell? I'm sorry. Brandy Parsons. Brandy Parsons. Hi Brandy, how are you?
Hi, first of all, I should say I go by Nikki.
Okay. Thank you Nikki, I'm sorry about that.
That's okay.
So introduce yourself, tell us your address, and maybe give us 30 seconds on why you're here today.
Uh, my address is 715 Bowman Avenue, and I've lived in Woodland Park, and I'm a business owner, and I kind of have a vested interest in how downtown does, and I'd like to be more involved in my community.
Sounds good. Council? Who'd like to start?
Why is it written in me? That's true, I have been on the DDA, so I do have a, a very good knowledge of what goes on there. So Nikki, I'm just going to go back to your application, and just read what you said, and maybe you can just, maybe put more detail into it.
Okay.
That way the community knows what you're telling us. So why do you want to serve on the DDA? As a Woodland Park business owner, I want to help the local businesses in the area to succeed and to help Woodland Park become a great placed business. Would you like to add anything to that?
Yeah, I think we could do so much more for business than we do, whether it's holding events, or making traffic better. I think as a business owner, I've kind of flown alone. I haven't really been in networking things, because that hasn't really applied to my business. I'm a pretty specific, I'm a yarn shop. You either knit or you don't. You crochet. But I've grown as a person and as a business owner, and I feel a lot more confident in my abilities, and I think I could, I'm kind of a younger generation, and I think that could be a good thing for Woodland Park, because a lot of the younger people work down in the Springs, and so they don't have time to be a part of Woodland Park. I'd kind of like to bring a fresh perspective. Sure.
I'll go ahead and continue, is that okay?
Please do.
Okay. I'm asking these to each applicant. The next question is, what in your opinion are the three most pressing issues facing the city of Woodland Park relative to the Board which you are applying? Your answer, getting tourism and events that bring people to Woodland Park, making sure Woodland Park is fiscally protected. making sure Woodland Park is fiscally solvent, managing the influx of traffic with growth. So, maybe I'll add to that question. How is that relative to what the DDA does?
So, I'll be pretty honest. One of the reasons I asked to join is because I don't know what they do. And I think a lot of people don't, and I think we discussed this at the last meeting that I attended.
Right.
That the DDA has not given a good impression or a good answer to what does the DDA do. But I'm an entrepreneur, I'm an expert at getting answers I don't have. And this is one of the ways I decided to do it.
So, you're all looking at me still?
No, no. Kelly?
I just would like to, and you kind of took part of my zeal with my question away just now, but I was just curious if you could share with us your knowledge about the DDA and what you think, or what your impressions are of their role, and how you could contribute to that.
Um, I don't, like, honestly, I don't really know what they do.
Okay.
But, you know, I'm like a Facebook watcher. I scroll on past. But I know that I've seen a lot of drama, and I think most of the people I talk to don't know. And so, I think it would be really good to get more information about what they do out there in a positive manner. Like, I'm not one of those people that has a negative impression of what they've done or do. I kind of have a neutral, unknowledgeable. So, I kind of would like to figure it out, but I don't think that that makes me not able to help.
Okay, great. Well, I just, I'm the new council liaison, I've taken Noel's place on the DDA board, so I would certainly invite you, whether you're selected this evening or not, to come more often.
Oh, I definitely will, yeah.
And learn, because it's very interesting. And carry that message to the board, that maybe more communication about what they're doing would be good for the community.
Definitely more community outreach. Like, I know it's hard. I've had some experience with how nasty people can be, especially when they hide behind fake profiles.
Yeah.
And when I was watching all the drama happen, I'm like, "Why are they so mad?" And I really bring it down to, they don't have, they have not had a great ability to put out information. But I do understand that they make decisions and help affect the downtown area and businesses. And that does affect me. And so, I think I have a vested interest in assisting Woodland Park.
Well, thank you, and I'll carry your message. Thank you.
Carol?
Well, again, I had wondered if you had attended, Nikki, if you had attended a DDA meeting, and it sounds like you have.
One, but it's hard to even find out when the meetings are.
They should be posted on their website.
We're on the first Tuesdays of the month at 7:30 a.m.
There you go. But, on the other hand, I am excited about someone in your age demographic being interested in becoming a part of the community. And I'm sure Suzanne can let you know how many openings we do have. I know we're gonna have an opening on the Historical Preservation Committee very soon. Main Street is another great place for you to take your talents. And I am excited that you're here and that you're interested in what's going on. So, thank you for applying.
Val?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. You kind of answered this question anyway, but I'm gonna ask it because it's kind of critical to the current timeframe about TIPS, tax increment financing. And if you know about it, great, you know, explain your knowledge of it. If not, get to know it pretty quickly. There's a lot of good people in town on the DDA sitting up here that know some things about it. If you would please, ma'am, would you?
My bare bones understanding is, it is a tax incentive for a business that has put into improving the area, and they get a tax refund for doing that.
Thank you.
Pretty dang close.
Yep.
Pretty dang close.
Hey, you know, we have Google.
Anybody else for Nikki? I just want to thank you for putting in an application and volunteering your time. I deeply appreciate that.
Thanks, I have kids. I have 12 and 14-year-olds. And they are in our school system, and they're watching their mother run a business. And I want our next generation that's coming up to get involved even earlier than I do, because it affects them.
Very, very noble.
Absolutely, thank you.
Thanks, Nikki, thank you for being here.
Thanks.
Our last applicant is Nick Pinell. Good evening, Nick, thanks for being here.
Good evening, thank you for having me.
Give us your name and address, and give us a little time on why you're here tonight.
All right, well, first of all, thank you for having me here tonight. My name's Nick Pinell. I own what is, used to be called SYS Auction Sales, but is now Woodland Square Vintage Market. We've changed the name, done some changes with the square there, added a couple of wheeled units as the wagons. My address is 2000 Arapahoe Street, up off of Edlow Road, 808-63. I've been in business in Woodland Park for almost six years. Next month will be six years.
Great. Council, who'd like to start?
You're all looking at me again, so I will start. Nick, thank you for being here, I appreciate it. I'm glad to see an interest in the DDA. I remember times when we would have one applicant in two positions, so, thank you. And I, so what I'll do, I'm asking the same questions to all the applicants. I'm just gonna read what you have put in two questions, and then I would like you to just talk more about it. Maybe things that you didn't put here, you can talk more about. Because I know there's only limited space here. First question that I'll talk about is, why do you want to serve on the DDA? What you put is, "I am a business owner within the DDA district. I would like to help assist the business owners to help make Woodland Park a better community."
Yeah, I've been in Teller County for 26 years now. I've seen a lot of things happen, I've seen a lot of changes happen. But I am extremely community-oriented. This is where my son goes to school. He goes to middle school now. And I'm a single father, and I love doing business in Woodland Park. I like the people. I like the tourists, too. Enjoy them. But I like the locals. And I think that we need more local things. And I want to be, I want to definitely try to increase business, not just my business, but everybody's business up here. Because it's a great place to, it is a good place to do business.
Great, thank you. I'm gonna go ahead and read the next question that was on the application. What, in your opinion, are the three most pressing issues facing the city of Woodland Park relative to the board commission for which you are applying? And what you put here is, traffic issues, signage, sorry, I'm going blind, and beautification. And I'm sure there's so much more you want to talk about, so I'm gonna give it over to you.
There is, and I do, you know, I can sit at my window and watch traffic be kind of at a standstill and watch the people go, "Oh, Antiques Store," but they want to get through town. And so, that's where signage comes in. A lot of people, I don't believe, know about parking and the free parking that we have. I mean, I'm surrounded by free access. And I even have a good enough parking lot you could pull a horse trailer into, or a smaller fifth-wheel. And I'd really like those customers. You know, and the beautification of Woodland Park, I've tried to do my best, just in my little area, but I've got a unique area with the walkway. I really do. I've tried to work with the city on doing some really cool things, so that it actually draws in customers. The wagons, for example. I didn't realize when I bought my first wagon that I was gonna sell 15 in less than a year.
Wow.
And, you know, for the grace of God, that happened. But it also opens something up to us that, that's kind of cool. It goes with the theme of Woodland Park. You know, a good covered wagon, or a buckboard. And so, it's one of those things, I've worked with Jan on improving, you know, just our little area. But I would like to see all those areas approved, you know, across the street, you know, some flowers or something, just to catch everybody's eye and point out, "Hey, we've got businesses here. We've, you know, we've got good businesses here."
Wow, it shows like you already have some great ideas and implemented them, and so I could see that, you know, that that would help the DDA into new ideas, I'll just say that. But thank you very much.
Paul? Thank you, Nick. Just for clarity, I consider you a friend. I have visited your stores ever since you opened up. In the beginning, I wasn't sure about you.
I wasn't sure either.
You have come a long ways. Your store has definitely improved. You have definitely added to the looks of the city. You have cooperated, as far as I can see, with the city. And you're trying your best to be involved with the different meetings that go on, as I see you at different meetings. And through the years, you have really turned yourself around in your business. And it's a pleasure to go by your store. It's looking extremely well, and a lot of people are stopping by, taking notice, and the wagons are a great addition.
Is there a question?
Yeah, there is a question.
You want to put in there?
I wanted to clarify my position with this person. As a business, as a person, I visit the businesses on Main Street and throughout the town. I visit a lot of businesses. I want that known, because it's gonna sway the way I vote. But I also don't like calamity brought into this chamber. I believe, and you can answer this, is it your intention to cooperate with the DDA board, to be involved, to honestly work with them hand-in-hand to resolve issues, and to continue along the line of promoting the city and the business inside the city and inside the DDA?
Absolutely. You know, first of all, there's no monetary gain for me being on the DDA. I would like to eventually own my building, but I don't now. So, I look at it as, I'm not becoming a member or wanting to become a member of the DDA to drive more people just into my business. My goal is to help drive more people into everybody's business here. This is a good community to do business in. And I don't want to see somebody go down the hill that could actually have a good business up here. So, like you, Paul, and many of you, I respect going into those businesses and talking to them. Me, as a board member, would like to do the same thing. Go into the other businesses and talk to them and find out. You know, I'm not here just to do what's best for me. I'm here to do what's best for Woodland Park, because I expect to be here. My kid's 12. I've got six more years before I can get that motor home. So, you know, and I believe in good, hard work. I bring my son to work with me. He does work for me. I pay him. And I'm trying to show him that this is a good business to do, and it's also a great place to do business and to live. So, but yes, I think that my main goal is to work with the DDA and not be a flying ointment.
Carol?
I appreciate your attitude and the fact that you have a successful business. That's so important to every member of the community. But in terms of the DDA and understanding TIF, what is your knowledge of TIF? And have you attended DDA meetings?
I've attended a couple of DDA meetings. The hard part for me last year was that my son went to school in Divide at 9:00 in the morning. So, I really couldn't get him to school. Now, he goes to school at 7:30 in the morning. So, I have much more of an advantage to go to those meetings and to be more productive of it. I realize the requirements of it. As far as TIF goes, I have a limited knowledge of it, but as I read on, you know, it's a case-by-case basis of who deserves those TIFs. And, you know, to me, big business, little business, if it helps bring in business to Woodland Park, then that's where I think that person deserves it, whether, you know, it's a little guy or a big guy. Obviously, I'm for the little guy, because I was the little guy, and I am still the little guy. But, you know, it's all businesses, as far as I see, you know, giving them a case-by-case basis.
Anybody else? Nick, thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Thanks for being here.
Okay.
Thank you very much, Nick. Thank you. Okay. We have one signed up to talk on this matter from the audience, Kurt Grinner.
Gee, only one. Thank you, Mayor, my name's Kurt Grinner. My address is 216 Patricia Point, Woodland Park. First, just a real quick reaction. It's really inspiring to see that we have, as you say, three applicants for one position instead of, what was it, one applicant for two positions of the past. And not only applicants, but people clearly really care. They have the spirit of, that I am familiar with of Woodland Park. There is a spirit of Woodland Park. Is this working?
Talk into me closer.
Thought maybe you cut me off, so. That's just emotional sharing for a real quick. Let me talk about what I intended to. This is really large font, so it's not gonna take very long, even though it's several pages. I want to make several points that are important to me. One is, this is important. This isn't just another appointment to another board, and who's gonna be on the Historical Preservation Board, which is, you know, great, but it's not important. This is important. This is really important. The DDA, as it was intended, is doing its intended purpose. By the way, I understand the DDA intended purpose extremely well. I've been to many meetings, I've researched the topic. I've looked at other instances of DDA's other places. I've studied the Gallagher Amendment, and I've studied the Constitution of Colorado and so on. So, I've spent a lot of time invested in this. The DDA is following its intended purpose and is well-managed. You can argue the wisdom of having a DDA, but at least this part is working as envisioned. I don't want to get into debate of the wisdom. First of all, I don't like the idea of some citizens deciding money, of other people's money to give to other people. I think that's distinctly un-American. And I think we need the DDA, because the DDA is one of the very few antidotes we have to the tyranny of the Gallagher Amendment that kills business across Colorado, especially in small towns like this. We've suffered badly because of the Gallagher Amendment.
Kurt, I appreciate your comments. You got about another three minutes, five minutes.
Are you gonna cut me off at that?
At five minutes, I am, yes, sir.
That's a Woodland, that's DDA. The Woodland Station is another topic. More than $6 million in debt, mostly unsecured. People live here because of this nature, the nature's beauty that we're surrounded with. That's why I'm here, at least that's part of why I'm here. Anyone else? It's beautiful. It is beautiful. Yet, right in the middle of it is this, of this awesome place is a huge ugly scar that you can see from a space station. It's been here for years, and there's no tangible prospect to fix it. It will be here for many more years because of that. We have a widespread reputation in the city as the city government that screwed up the DDA, blighted their own town, and continue to pat themselves on the back while others are laughing at us or just embarrassed. I'm embarrassed, who else is embarrassed? The DDA doing its real job is handcuff. The DDA doing its real job is handcuff. How, how can it do its original job of $6 million plus in debt? Answer, it can't. This progress is fragile. We need people on this board now who are not just well intentioned, but that can really continue the progress that's being made. The progress is being made. We have largely turned the corner. Not, not totally, but we've made huge progress. I want to thank Mary Jo, Jan, Jerry, Murph, and Tanner for leading the, the charge to turn the corner, to stop the spiral, the death spiral that this thing was in, thanks to phenomenally bad decisions by city management ratified by a mostly asleep Generation One DDA Board. We now have a Generation Two DDA Board, and that's making all the difference. We can't screw that up. We need to continue with Generation Two, which is doing the right thing. I think, I've done some work on what I think the criteria for this terribly important position is, I assume that you guys have done the same thing. One, skilled in business management, demonstrated by exceptional success, demonstrated by exceptional success, deeply committed, demonstrated by a deep personal investment in the economic prosperity of our community. Leadership and persuasiveness, demonstrated by loyalty and the following of many, many of our citizens. Deep understanding and commitment of America's proven conservative principles of good governance and public policies. Willing to dive in and participate in the course that, that is already set. Pete LeBarre, I went down the checklist, and I didn't make up the checklist looking at his resume, but sure does fit. Management, successful Air Force career, successful entrepreneur, successful businessperson. Two, does he fail or succeed with our community's prosperity? You bet. He fails or succeeds with our community.
Got 30 seconds, Kurt.
What?
30 seconds.
Leadership. Ask the Republican, people who voted him twice. America's Principles, graduate of LPR. That's very difficult to do, and he did it. Understands what the Board is doing and is committed to adding to their strength, not trying to, to go back to the old days or set some new things. This is important. Better get it right. Thank you.
Thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
If I may, I would just like to make a comment, Mr. Grinner. The city staff, and I think the council would agree that we consider all our committees and our boards important. Is that one more important than the other?
Is there a point to that?
Thanks.
We're not going to have discussion here.
Just clarifying.
Thank you. Thank you, sir.
Any other questions or?
No questions.
Thank you.
Okay, Sally's going to pass out the ballots. We can bring the applicants in, I believe?
Thank you.
Thank you. So it'll be a paper ballot, and Suzanne will read from the ballots on who everybody voted for.
Mayor, before you, before we read off the, the decision, thank you, Chrissy, would you like to say something about the DDA and about the volunteerism of this community?
Would I like to?
Yeah, would you like to?
I didn't have anything in mind, go ahead.
I'd just like to say thank you for the three applicants. I was on the DDA for three years, three and a half years. It is a, is a great board. The intentions are to make the DDA whole. Mr. Grinner is correct. There was a huge turn three and a half years ago. We do have a large debt, and we are looking to take care of that debt. There is no, there's no magic way of doing it. We're just hard work and continue forward. And we will pay off as much as we can, as quickly, or, I'm sorry, the DDA will pay off as much as it can, as quickly as it can. I think the Board is excellent at the moment. And I believe any three of these applicants would be a great addition. We'll see how it goes. But if you do not get on the Board, there are many other places to volunteer in this community. As Carol said, the historical preservation, which sounds like a really cool.
It's cool. I don't know if it's as important as the DDA.
Well, it's not as important, but it is definitely a stepping stone.
Important is not the right word. It may not be as impactful on as many people, but it's equally as important.
I agree.
Absolutely.
There are many other places to volunteer. Park and Rec, Advisory Utility. Is there any current openings for other boards right now?
Woodland Park, keep Woodland Park beautiful.
Keep Woodland Park beautiful.
And then remember, there'll be two positions for DDA.
And two more positions next council meeting. So there's always availability to be a part of this community in a, in a volunteer way and bring your expertise to the table.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Suzanne?
Thank you. I will read how the council voted. Mayor Levy has voted for Pete LeBarre. Mayor Protamkar has voted for Nick Pennell. Councilmember Case has voted for Nick Pennell. Councilmember Harvey has voted for Nick Pennell. Councilmember Soynier has voted for Nick Pennell. Councilmember Sawyer has voted for Nick Pennell as well. So Nick Pennell wins by five to one vote of the council.
Okay, Nick, congratulations. If you'll come forward, and Suzanne will swear you in.
Can we grab while Ms. LeBarre? Okay.
Well, Nick's moving forward. Nikki and Pete, please come back in two weeks, four weeks, and reapply because I think you're both outstanding applicants. So we appreciate you being here and hopefully we get to see you again. Sorry, Suzanne, go ahead.
Nick, raise your right hand and state your name.
Aye.
I repeat, I am a citizen of the United States, and I support the Constitution, the United States, and the state of Colorado, the charter and ordinances of the city of Woodland Park, and that I will faithfully perform the duties of member of the downtown development authority, or director, upon which I am to enter. Congratulations, sir.
Thank you.
Put this on here, here, and then you can keep one. Kelly, do you want to tell them when his first meeting is?
I'd be happy to.
Thank you very much. Appreciate it.
Well, without a calendar, it is the first Tuesday of the month. So that would be the first Tuesday in July. And so would you like me to look at my calendar and tell me what that is?
Nope, I just got it right.
You haven't, all right.
July 3rd.
Thank you. And we meet here in this room at 7:30 a.m.
Okay.
And welcome.
Thank you.
Look forward to working with you.
I appreciate that. Thank you very much.
Thanks, Nick.
And thank you to everyone.
Okay, we will move on. Ms. Palmer and presentation from the Girls of the West. Who's going to lead that today?
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. Thanks very much for having us. Obviously, I'm not a Girl of the West. I'm part of the Warm-Up Act, so we'll get to the important part very quickly. Very interesting meeting, by the way.
Thank you, sir.
My name is Chris Whitney. I'm the president of the Pike's Peak Range Riders. And just as an aside, I have no horse in this race, but any man who has a parking lot big enough for a horse trailer would, would have gotten my vote if I could have given it. Mr. Mayor, members of the council, I think most of you are familiar with the Pike's Peak Range Riders. We're a nonprofit organization that really exists for two purposes. One, to assist in, in military families who are stationed in all branches in the Pike's Peak region. And the second is to promote and protect Western heritage and culture. We do the first by supporting the Pike's Peak Bus Rodeo. We put a lot of effort into that. The reason being that the proceeds from the Pike's Peak Bus Rodeo are donated to military families in the Pike's Peak region. So the better job we do in promoting the rodeo, the more funds there are available for distribution to the families. And I should say, there are about 236 members of the Range Riders, and a lot of them have military backgrounds. So that's very much on our minds. As to the promotion of Western heritage and culture, we have something called the Pike's Peak Range Rider Foundation. And we do a lot of community work through that foundation and through affiliates, such as the Pike's Peak Rangerettes. Many of you are probably familiar with them. That's an equestrian drill team of young women, ages 12 to 20. The Pike's Peak Range Rider Pivot, which is a group, and also an equestrian team of, of men who are members of the, of the Range Riders. We support something called the Pike's Peak Range Rider Special Rodeo, which is put on every year. The people who attend that and participate in that are generally clients of the Colorado Springs Therapeutic Riding Center and the Pike's Peak Therapeutic Riding Center. So this gives those folks and their families an opportunity to get a taste of the West and a taste of rodeo. And then the biggest thing we do to kick off the rodeo season is we have the Colorado Springs Western Street Breakfast, which I know many of you are familiar with. That's a giant Western Street Breakfast party for everybody in the community. This year, that will be on June 20th. And the Range Riders start their ride by riding through town on June 20th to begin the five-day ride. And the five-day ride is the most visible thing that we do to call attention to the rodeo. So that's the Pike's Peak Range Riders, and I'm very grateful to you for the opportunity to just speak to you for a minute this evening. Thank you very much.
Pete, thanks for being here. Thank you very much.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the council, ladies and gentlemen. I too am not one of the Girls of the West, but I stand between you all and them. My name is Jeff Renahan, and I'm the president of the Pike's Peak Bus Rodeo. And I have about a 30-minute presentation that, I can do this really in, in less than a minute and a half. Because these, these beautifully young ladies are going to tell you everything you need to know about the Pike's Peak Bus Rodeo. But there are just a couple of things I would like to highlight. You know, Spencer Penrose started the rodeo in 1937, and it's been going on every year except for three years during World War II. We are the second oldest event in Colorado Springs behind the hill climb. Excuse me. Spencer Penrose decided at, at the end of World War II, as folks were coming back to Camp Carson at the time, that he was going to donate all the proceeds from the rodeo to military families in town. That tradition continues, and this is our 78th year of doing that. Our, our rodeo is put on by, all by volunteers. I have a 14-member board, and we have over 350 folks that will come out and help us put the rodeo on this year. We have, we will run about 30,000 people through, through, through the rodeo in our, in our four days, five performances. We have an online ticket system so we can kind of see who bought tickets. Last year, we had people from seven foreign countries in all 50 states. And we know we're going to, we're going to outdo that a little bit this year. The mission of our rodeo, real quick, is two things. We want to preserve Western heritage, preserve the rodeo, and help our military families. I'm a Colorado Springs native. I grew up here, but I did a 26-year kind of U-turn when I went to the United States Air Force. I retired about 10 years ago. So you can see between the rodeo and the, and the military is pretty easy, it's pretty easy calling for me to come in to do this. I was fortunate, I was able to command three times when I was in, in the Air Force. Again, I can tell you, there's never enough money for our young troops, our young soldiers, sailors, airmen, marine, airmen, marines, and coast guards. So what we do provides those funds to our Royal Foundation Board, and we're able to give those out each year. Thank you to the City of Manitou and for, for your support to the rodeo, the support that you will provide. Or what, I'm sorry.
Tell me on two minutes.
I am on the, I do have, yeah. We did that one the other day. Sorry.
It's okay.
My bad.
It's okay.
Yeah.
Just wait.
But on behalf of, of the Board, I would like to say thank you to the people of Woodland Park for all your help and support. And I'd like to introduce Corliss Palmer and the Girls of the West.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Your hand is short. Thank you. I'm Corliss Palmer, and I'm a 17-year volunteer for the Pike's Peak Bus Rodeo. And my main job is to direct the Girls, Girls of the West. It's one of the best opportunities anyone could have. I spend all summer with these two lovely ladies. We make about 150 appearances in two months' time. So we're busy. This is our third today. My fourth, but sometimes I do other things besides take them around. We have a nice truck we get from Perkins. And the Girls of the West story began in 1922, and that's when the name was chosen. And they were, they put pennies in a jar to choose who it was. They were the Western Girl and to promote Western way of life. And they're ambassadors, and that's still what they are today. The Girl of the West is a two-summer program, and we'll choose next year's aide during this rodeo this year because it takes many months to design and make their custom outfits and their hats and all of what they have. They are college students, so they only work in the summer. We'll have a competition that includes horsemanship interviews, speech, and appearance. And it's pretty rigorous. And sometimes the girls try out three or four times to get the opportunity to be the Girl of the West. So I'll introduce the girls. Sierra Silva, right here, is the 2018 Girl of the West. She's the 21-year-old daughter of Joni Duran of Henderson, Colorado. She developed a love and passion for horses at a young age and participated in Adams County 4-H and graduated as a Level Three Horsewoman. She competes in anything you can do on a horse, English Western, ranch horse, Jim Canna, polo, you name it. She currently works as a dental assistant and attends the Community College of Denver, where she's studying biology and psychology. And she plans to continue her education to become a dentist. And she rides an American quarter horse named Whiskey Breeze. Kayla Summers, our aide to Girl of the West, is the 19-year-old daughter of Brian and Suzanne Summers. From competing in team roping and 4-H horse shows to leading the Pike's Peak Rangerettes and being the county fair, El Paso County Fair Queen last year, she spent many days in the saddle living the coat of the West. She's a junior at the North, University of Northern Colorado, sorry, where she studies biomedical sciences and with an emphasis on chemistry. And she plans to continue her education to become a physician's assistant. She rides a paint horse named Abigail. So please enjoy their presentation.
Howdy, everybody. My name is Sierra Silva, and I'm the Girl of the West.
And I'm Kayla Summers, aide to Girl of the West.
We are both proud ambassadors of the Pike's Peak Bus Rodeo. You'll see our Perkins Ram pink truck all over town as we head out to appearances at businesses, military installations, and community events. Why do we do it? Because we are passionate about the Pike's Peak Bus Rodeo and the Western traditions that it represents. The 78th Annual Pike's Peak Bus Rodeo will take place July 11th through the 14th at the scenic Norris Penrose Event Center in Colorado Springs, attracting top talent in professional rodeo to this invitational event. Forty champion cowboys and cowgirls from across the country will be invited to compete in seven standard events, including bareback riding, steer wrestling, team roping, saddle bronc riding, tie-down roping, barrel racing, and bull riding, plus fan favorite mutton busting. Fans will come from far and wide to enjoy top rodeo action and lots of family fun, all paying tribute to our local military and their families.
That's right. The Pike's Peak Bus Rodeo runs from Wednesday, July 11th, through Saturday, July 14th, with performances at 7:00 p.m. Wednesday through Saturday evenings, and the Saturday matinee performance at 12:30 p.m. There are four performances of invitational tournaments. There are four performances of invitational championship rodeo and the thrilling Stinch Shootout Championship on Saturday night, where the top eight scores and eight fastest times from the qualifying performances will put it all on the line for over $200,000 in prize money. It's edge-of-your-seat excitement from the first event to the last. But don't miss the smash-hit bonus event, Bullfighters Only Freestyle Bullfighting, back this year and better than ever. On Wednesday, Thursday, and Friday evenings, three fearless bullfighters will compete to post top scores and advance to the finals at the Saturday matinee performance with bragging rights and the cash prize on the line. There's lots to do before the rodeo starts. Grounds open at 4:00 p.m. for the evening performances and 10:00 a.m. for the Saturday matinee. Come early, skip traffic, and enjoy all the family-friendly pre-show fun in our fan zone. There's mutton busting tryouts, mechanical bull riding, pony rides, bungee jumps, tractor trains, army vehicles, vendor booths, and much, much more. You can grab a bite to eat, then get ready for the rodeo. All of the performances start with the Pike's Peak Range Rider Pivot and the Pike's Peak Rangerettes Drill Team, followed by the Fort Carson Mounted Color Guard. After the rodeo, head on over to the Coors Roadhouse Saloon for live music, dancing, and of course, plenty of cold coors. Our local military are honored at each performance. Fort Carson on Wednesday evening, Missile Defense and First Responders on Thursday, Air Force Base Command on Friday, the United States Air Force Academy at the Saturday matinee, and NORAD US North Com on Saturday night. Since 1946, the Pike Speaker Bus Rodeo has been giving back to our local military and their families. Rodeo season kicks off with some other great events that our community loves. Join us bright and early and grab a plate at the Colorado Springs Western Street Breakfast on Wednesday, June 20th from 5:30 to 9:00 a.m. It's the official send-off for the Pike's Peak Range Riders as they begin their annual five-day ride. This $5 breakfast, prepared and served by our Fort Carson volunteers, includes eggs, pancakes, coffee, milk, and juice, and is free for kids ages five and under. Also at the street breakfast is the 70th Annual Little Cowboys and Cowgirls Roundup, where boys and girls ages three to 10 will be wearing their western best for some great prizes. And the best way to kick off rodeo week is with the 78th Annual Pike Speaker Bus Rodeo Parade in true hometown tradition. You'll see floats, equestrian groups, military units, and lots of local businesses as they head south on T. Home Street from St. Vrain to Vermaheau in downtown Colorado Springs on Tuesday, July 10th, starting at 6:30 p.m., and it's free to attend. Then, it's time for championship rodeo action at its best. The dates again for the Pike Speaker Bus Rodeo are Wednesday, July 11th through Saturday, July 14th. Save time and save money by purchasing your tickets online now at pikespeakerbus.org. See you at the 78th Pike Speaker Bus Rodeo, July 11th through the 14th, at the Norris Penrose Event Center in Colorado Springs.
We'd love to get a picture. Who would you like a picture with? Everyone. Do, Ms. Palmer, how about everybody come up here and we'll kind of gather up here? Does that make sense? Council, we can just kind of meet over there maybe, or in front of the flags. Come on back, ladies. Let me get this out of the way. Excuse me. For obvious reasons. Great job. Great job. Kayla, great job. Come on here in the middle and beauty ahead of you. Great job. Unbelievable. Right here. Whoever you are, let's get the girls, let's try to get the ladies right in the middle if we can.
Put them in the middle.
There we go. That's perfect. Okay. Thanks very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, guys. It was lovely. Great job.
Great job. Great job, thank you. Let them get up and go. Okay. Okay. All right, thank you all very much. I think you all would agree with young folks like that in our lives, our country's in pretty good hands, so thanks again to you all for being here today and best of luck to you. You bet. Okay, we move on, special part of the ceremony, and Suzanne.
Thank you, Mayor Levy. This evening, we have a bittersweet event to celebrate. As a lot of you know that we're here and are still here, our Honorable Judge Bruce is retiring after 36 years to the city of Woodland Park. I've had the pleasure personally working for Judge Bruce for two of those years, and it was wonderful. He has a lot of wisdom. I've learned a lot from him. It's a big loss to the city. He's taken with him a lot of history, a lot of knowledge. Carla and I, Carla is his court clerk currently, we were talking and trying to figure out about how many court sessions Judge Bruce has done for the city of Woodland Park, and we came up with an estimate of about 900. He's been here, he's been our presiding judge since 1982. We came up with 900 court sessions, couldn't come up with how many trials he's done. He may know that number, but it is numerous. And so, I'd like to welcome Judge Bruce to the podium, congratulate him on his retirement, and wish him the very best. I also have a gift I'd like to present to him. So, I don't know if you all know this, but the judge is leaving us. He's moving. He's moving out of Woodland Park. He's moving to Littleton, Colorado. So, the city staff has purchased for the judge to enjoy in his retirement. We have a golf certificate to Fox Hollow, which is going to be the golf course by your home, your new home. And then, we also have a gift certificate for you to go out to eat at the Indulge Bistro and Wine Bar, which is also by your home. So, please enjoy those two on the city of Woodland Park. Here's a card from the staff and another card from another individual. So, thank you. Thank you for everything. It's been a pleasure.
Yeah.
My wife is a golfer in the family, and it just so happens she knows Fox Hollow, so... Mr. Mayor, members of council, Ms. McClair, Chief DeYoung, thank you very much for getting the opportunity to say a few things, and thank you very, very much for the reception, which had a lot of my old friends here, several former councilmen, a couple of former mayors, a district court judge, and a lot of other people coming. You know, people ask me, you know, after 36 years, what's municipal court like to be a municipal judge? And I think back to the judges conference several years ago where Carver Supreme Court Justice Tony Pollak, who was a former municipal judge, told us what he thought a municipal judge was like, and he said, you know, it's kind of like being the only fire hydrant in a town full of dogs. And while that may be a little tiny bit true, my experience in Woodland Park has been the exact opposite. It seems like I get a lot of respect, what I feel is undue respect perhaps for just a municipal judge. And also, I found that true in the court itself. I've been very fortunate over the years. I've never had any big clashes with council. I think I've gotten along pretty well with the police department, including the current administration, so it's been a very enjoyable time. I also have the general feeling that I think most municipal judges have, where the court generally considered to be of lowest jurisdiction, and there's an argument that makes us the most important court in the system. It's where one of the Aurora judges says, the rubber meets the road, while Neil Gorsuch is on the front page as a new United States Supreme Court Justice. When you get that traffic ticket or your dog gets loose, you want to see the fair individual judging your case. And so, I think not only myself, but I know the county court judges and the other municipal judges in the area work very hard at that, to be absolutely as fair and understanding as you can be. As far as how things changed in the last 36 years, I brought a couple of old documents. I always remember when I first showed up for work, and Rand Borries, I think was the clerk in those days. This is how we kept a poor record, and I don't know, probably can't see it from there, but it's all in handwriting. This is a special municipal court book that used to be put out. The thing I remember about it was it cost the city $600 to get these books. Everything that is in there is all written in handwriting. Cindy Morris has very distinctive handwriting. You see her handwriting, and of course, now, everything's done by computer, and whether it's done by computer or whether it's done in handwriting, the court clerk is the person who does it. As a part-time judge, I'm here one day a week or one day every other week, and my court clerk's here three days a week, and she's the one that handles everything, so I'm very appreciative not only of Suzanne's work when she was court clerk, but Carla's work now. If you have questions about the court and you want to get the straight answer, go to the court clerk first, because she's the one that has that. The council might know from my staff report, I'm recommending that our Assistant Judge Elizabeth McClintock take over the position of Presiding Judge. Elizabeth was selected from several applicants for Assistant Judge three years ago. She's served in that capacity since then, has done an excellent job. She's a practicing trial attorney in Colorado Springs, a criminal defense attorney. In addition to that, she's kept up with the way we all do in the municipal court system through the Municipal Judges Association with the changes in municipal law, and as luck would have it, the last two years, we've had a lot of changes. The ACLU has been upset with the bench warrants and money, collection of money. So, it is changing and changing quite a bit in the last few years. So, with council's permission, I'd like to ask Elizabeth to step up.
John, before you do that, just a question for you, real quick. You alluded to it, you brought it up, so I guess legally I can continue on that. One of your good friends and former mayor's, Mayor Porter, said that your name was Hang Em High Bruce. Is there any truth to that? And before you leave, honestly, 36 years, give us a great story, because I know you have a bunch of them. Take a minute and give us a great story, would you?
Well, I don't know. There were some amusing times during those years, of course. But you put me on the spot. I usually have a...
You could tell me one you told before about the award that you received.
The award I received?
At 25 years or 30 years?
Oh. After I'd been here 30 years, as council's aware, there's a plaque that every five years that city employees can get. The city manager at the time, I think it was Mark Fitzgerald, may I be wrong, came down with a plaque for 25 years, and I said, well, Mark, thank you very much. I've actually been here 30 years. Yeah, but we only got 25 years of work out of you.
Well, thanks for that, John. We'll bring up Elizabeth, and thank you so much for your service, and we're all indebted to you. We really are.
Thank you, John.
Thanks very much.
Elizabeth McClintock, she is the Deputy Assistant Judge and has been for three years. She's been excellent in that position, including just recently when I had some aversion surgery. I know because we scheduled it in advance, she had a lot of stuff that she needed to do. We scheduled all of it. She just got back from judges conference a couple of weeks, three weeks ago.
Thank you. Mr. Bruce, Honorable Bruce has recommended that we appoint Elizabeth McClintock as the Presiding Municipal Judge. She's been in the assistant position for the last three years, has done a great job. And so, council, if I could get a motion, we can move forward.
I want to approve the appointment of Judge McClintock to be our Presiding Judge.
And we have a second from Mayor Protem Carr. Suzanne?
Carr?
Yes.
Case?
Yes.
Harvey?
Yes.
Labar?
Yes.
Levy?
Yes.
Sounier?
Yes.
Sawyer?
Yes.
Motion carries unanimously, and I would love to swear the new judge in.
Okay, great. Congratulations.
One thing I think we do need to also add, Your Honor, is that you're still going with the backup judge.
Yes.
We're not using.
Well, if I resigned completely, there wouldn't be a backup slot, so there would be somebody to take over. Elizabeth McClintock. I anticipate the council being her new assistant, whenever that person's appointed.
Thank you, sir.
May I make you raise your right hand and say, say my name?
I, Elizabeth McClintock.
Do you solemnly swear? I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I was called the Constitution of the United States.
And the state of Colorado.
And the state of Colorado.
The charter and ordinances.
Charter and ordinances.
The city of Woodland Park.
The city of Woodland Park.
Some people have this about... You're going to say something?
I'm trying to turn it down some. Congratulations.
Elizabeth, 36 years from now, we're going to have a great ceremony for you.
We're going to make that one for sure. May I? Congratulations.
Yes.
Congratulations.
Thank you, ma'am. Okay, thank you very much. All right, Suzanne, I know I'm going to read a proclamation. Do you have something to say about Gardening Week?
I don't, Your Honor. The proclamation is in front of you. If you could read it into the record, that would be appreciated.
Okay, terrific. This proclamation is recognizing Gardening Week, whereas gardeners have a passion for nurturing the beauty and resources of the earth through the planting of seeds, the care of all plants, and the riches of their efforts. And whereas gardeners seek to add beauty, splendor, fragrance, and nutrition to our lives through the growing of herbs, vegetables, foliage, and flowers. And whereas gardeners work to preserve our country's traditional spirit of independence and initiative through innovation and hard work. And whereas gardeners advocate the importance of all creatures, large and small, that share our world and their roles in a balanced and productive ecology. And whereas gardening furnishes a challenging and productive activity for our citizens, for those just learning as well as those having years of experience. And whereas gardening promotes a healthy lifestyle that lasts a lifetime, helps reduce stress from other areas of our life, teaches that rewards can come from diligent efforts. And whereas gardening enables members of garden clubs across the nation and the world to make a world of difference in the communities where they reside and work. Therefore, I kneel, Levy, Mayor of the City of Woodland Park, do hereby proclaim the week of June 3rd through June 9th, 2018, as Garden Recognition Week in the city of Woodland Park.
Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you very much. You bet. Okay, we will move on to agenda number four, and... Okay, we will move on to agenda number four, and Suzanne?
Yes, Mayor Levy, we actually have one deletion to tonight's agenda. That would be item 8B, which is a public hearing for ordinance number 1329. The applicant has withdrawn that request.
Okay, terrific. Counsel, anything else relative to the... Oh, I'm sorry, we'll move on to consent calendar. Just two things on the consent calendar approved minutes, the last meeting, and as we discussed, we're gonna cancel the meeting for June 21st and July 5th, and we'll replace it with a meeting three weeks from today, which is June 28th. That said, I need a motion to approve the consent calendar, please. So moved. Second. Thank you, Suzanne.
Case?
Yes.
Harvey?
Yes.
Labar?
Yes.
Levy?
Yes.
Sonnier?
Yes.
Sawyer?
Yes.
Carr?
Yes.
Thank you. Motion carries unanimously.
Thank you. Okay, move on to unfinished business, and Erin Smith?
And I have only a brief report, and that is to let you know there is no need for an executive session tonight, so none will be called or none will be requested. And then I will turn it over to the mayor to give enough on the process of the hiring of the city manager.
Okay, great, thank you very much. We're very fortunate. We have three tremendous finalists for our city manager position out of a pool of about 140. Our HR group that we hired has done a tremendous job and helped lead us to this spot. Tomorrow morning, we will have live interviews, and hopefully, if all goes well, sometime in the next few days, we will be able to tender a contract. And so we're at the end of the process. We have two that are with us tonight, and one that wasn't able to come, but we appreciate you being here, and look forward to tomorrow. Tomorrow's gonna be a great day for all of us, and getting to spend some time with these applicants, tremendous applicants, I should say. And rest assured, everybody, everyone that's here and everyone that's watching on TV, we are gonna have a tremendous city manager come out of this group, regardless who it is. And so we are all looking forward to the next step in having somebody sit in that chair. To counsel, thank you very much. We've had a great process. I think we've worked together well, and we're gonna continue and try to finish that process tomorrow. So that's where we stand. Okay, we're gonna move on. Ordinances on initial posting. Before we do that, Val Carr would like to say something.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I wanted to mention a brief comment here. My wife and I joined the Yoot Pass Saddle Club to promote rodeo for youth and 4-H interests in continuing our community's western heritage. My dad was a cowboy in his early years. I was on the Yoot Trail Stampede Rodeo Committee for the 2017 version of the rodeo on the eastern property of the Saddle Club last year. I've not really attended any Saddle Club meetings since last year and have zero financial or management interest in the Yoot Pass Saddle Club, other than paying dues. The Woodland Park Saddle Club, which is the listed applicant, is not what I joined in my understanding, but it may or may not be the same thing. I do not know for a fact either way. I'm still very interested in having rodeo and 4-H for the sake of youth of our community in some location, as it used to be historically at what is now Woodland Station, but that's the extent of my interest in this club. However, I asked the council whether my membership card in an organization called the Yoot Pass Saddle Club is sufficient to have me recuse myself from this issue before council. Either way's fine with me, I just want people to know my issue, and I'm putting it in front of the council to decide, please.
I too am a court member of Yoot Pass Saddle Club. Same intentions as Val. Set up for the rodeo. The rodeo has not been a stranger to me. I've been intending rodeos up here since the 90s. I guess I didn't realize that this was gonna happen until earlier, but please be advised. I too am a court caring member of the Yoot Pass Saddle Club.
I'd like to just mention something here. When I read this ordinance, I read Woodland Park Saddle Club is the Yoot Saddle Club and the Woodland Park Saddle Club, one in the same?
I can have Sally Riley explain that to you.
It's my understanding that the Woodland Park Saddle Club is the name of their incorporation, original incorporation, and they are doing business as the Yoot Pass Saddle Club.
Okay. Thank you for that clarification.
Erin, would you like to comment?
I'd be happy to. I'd be happy to, Mayor. I think with regard to Mayor Protem Carr's comment, and then I think really requests back to council, and the same, I think, from Councilman Sonier, I think that it's a reasonable approach. What the charter says with regard to the conflict of interest is that if the councilperson fails to declare that interest, the remaining members of the council shall determine by a majority vote whether such interest does in fact constitute a conflict of interest. So I think what we've done is sort of a hybrid of this, and what I think Mayor Protem Carr has said is that he's not declaring one way or another. He is going to let council decide, and I think the same for Councilman Sonier. And I think it really can be as informal as a discussion among you with perhaps closing the discussion with a vote or with a motion that would say, "I move that pursuant to our charter and pursuant to what we've heard, that both Mayor Protem Carr and Councilman Sonier have a conflict," or that neither Mayor Protem Carr or Councilman Sonier have a conflict in this circumstance.
I'll start the discussion. I hope you all agree with me. I think it's ludicrous to think that these guys have a conflict of interest in this regard. They help with the rodeo, they help set up, they support the rodeo, they don't have any financial interest. And so I would hope that we can keep them involved in this particular issue without incident. Counsel, thoughts?
I'd like to...
I would agree.
I'd like to add, are you either chair, vice chair, treasurer, or any board member that is in that capacity?
If I may, Mr. Mayor. I ran for treasurer, I threw my hat in the ring last year because nobody else had gap accounting knowledge, including the current treasurer. So I said, "Hey, I'll be treasurer." They voted me down, and I was fine. I went ahead and...
And Paul?
I'm the muscle. Try to get to your game, person, without paying attention.
So that's a no.
Yeah.
I'm okay, I don't believe there's a conflict of interest here.
I don't either, and this is initial posting. I would just like to add, because that's what I think too, is that it's a part of that LLC, that if the time comes for this purpose, I need to recuse myself, which is the initial theory, but when the time comes for a final decision on other issues, I'll be have to recuse myself if the council gives a necessary...
That said, have a motion?
I'd like to discuss it before we...
Discuss Val and Paul?
No.
Let's talk Val and Paul first.
I don't have anything else to say about Val and Paul.
Motion...
I would move to allow Mr. Councilman Sonier, Mayor Protem Carr, to participate in this vote.
Second. Suzanne?
Harvey?
Yes.
Labar?
Yes.
Levy?
Yes.
Sonnier? Sawyer?
Yes.
Carr?
I guess, are we supposed to vote now?
You are supposed to vote.
Okay, yes, I can just...
Case?
I think it's appropriate at this time.
Okay.
Thank you. Motion carries unanimously.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Sure. That said, we'll hand it over to Laura Pellegrino in concerning ordinance number 1330 on initial posting.
Thank you, Mayor Levy. My name is Laura Pellegrino, and I am the city planner. This is the initial posting for the application for a conditional use permit and a site plan review for the Woodland Park Saddle Club's conditional use. And it is submitted by the Woodland Park Saddle Club as the property owner and M3XP2 LLC, Eric Smith, and other members as the applicant. We are here to consider on initial posting first reading of ordinance number 1330, which was included in the packets, and is a draft form of that ordinance. It is a conditional use permit for a proposed 72,400 square foot storage and rental facility on a tract of land within government lots 234 of Section 30, Township 12, South, Range 68 West, and the 6th Prime Principal Meridian, with an address of 19250 East US Highway 24 in the Service Commercial Zone District of the city of Woodland Park. And staff is also requesting that we set the public hearing for July 19th, 2018.
Thank you, Laura. Counsel, we're on initial posting here, so there won't be much discussion. Carol?
Just for clarification, the applicant does not own the property, correct?
Correct.
And is that common practice for an applicant who does not own the property to ask for the conditional use permit?
Yes.
Thank you.
Anything else right now, Laura?
Yeah, I'd like to ask a question. Is there any current lawsuit or anything going on on the property at the moment, at the time, at this time?
There is a current lawsuit in place.
Okay.
Of which the city of Woodland Park is not a party to.
Correct. Would it be wise that we postpone this initial posting until that lawsuit is taken care of or completed?
The lawsuit is within the jurisdiction of the court, and this land use case is within the jurisdiction of this city council. The two are not related.
While you ponder that, because we can still discuss, and we normally don't do this, but we have a gentleman that has signed up for this, and we'll take public comment now from Elijah Murphy. And then we'll come back to counsel.
Good evening, thank you for the opportunity to speak. I'm Elijah Murphy. I own the historic unit at 204 West Midland Avenue. In 1937, the Pike's Peak Bus Rodeo started. 10 years later, the Woodland Park Saddle Club and Rodeo Incorporated started. And the Pike's Peak is the third oldest event, so that must make us, or one of the oldest events, so that must make us one pretty close to it. In 1947, Bert Bergstrom originally sold the, what is now considered Woodland Station, to the Saddle Club for $1. And it was eventually seen fit to sell that property and everything and move the Saddle Club.
Excuse me, Elijah?
Yes, sir.
I'm just gonna stop you for a minute. I'm gonna give you three minutes. Remember that this is gonna be discussed at the next meeting, when we make a decision. So you can say what you want to say, or you can bring it back when we actually discuss the issue.
So there's actually gonna be no discussion, it's gonna be the initial posting, and that's...
That's correct today, until the 28th.
Okay.
So I'll leave it up to you.
No, I'm just, all I'm gonna say is, whenever it comes down to development in this town, one of the things that we need to consider, small bedrooms, outfits, one of the things I saw was, on Facebook, a guy said he wanted a Chili's up here. And when I said, "There's one 18 miles from here," he said, "I don't like driving in the concrete jungle." I said, "Okay, so you want us to build a concrete jungle here for you." And that's one of my primary considerations. So I'm gonna leave it, I will prepare, I will finish up during the public comment next time around and not waste any more time, and try and help the guys keep it short.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Mayor?
Go ahead.
I would like to just clarify initial posting. If we feel that this should be postponed on initial posting, I see no problem with that. I don't know where it's written that it can't, or I guess I'd like to have some more clarification, if you don't mind.
Certainly, Councilmember Sawyer. Actually, we have a municipal code that dictates the protocols for entitlement and land development. And the application, this application, a conditional use permit, any conditional use permit application, goes in front of the planning commission for a recommendation, and then the code states that it goes to the next available city council meeting. Which is this meeting. And this meeting was agreed on by the applicant. So it has to come before the council. We can't table it, we can't postpone it for first initial posting. The municipal code does state that council can table it after a public hearing, for good reason. You'd have to have a reason. Again, the court case is not related to the land use case, so I'm not sure what the reason would be. However, that is something that you can discuss after public hearing.
Okay, great. Thank you for the clarification, and I have nothing else to say.
And may I just add, Mayor Levy, the public hearing is asked to be scheduled for July 19th, not June 28th.
Thank you very much, I saw that. Appreciate the correction.
That's exactly what I wanted to point out.
Kelly, thank you.
That we've got a great deal of time before the public hearing for information consideration and for people to prepare for the public hearing. So that seems like a reasonable amount.
Great. Any other questions? Okay, if not, just need a motion to consider ordinance 1330 on initial posting, and we'll set the public hearing for July 19th.
I'll move to approve.
Second. Thank you, Suzanne.
Labar?
Yes.
Levy?
Yes.
Sonnier?
Yes.
Sawyer?
Yes.
Carr?
Yes.
Case?
Yes.
Harvey?
I assume we have no choice, so I will say yes.
Thank you. Motion carries unanimously.
And I would remind counsel that this is a quasi judicial matter, and so all those restrictions that were discussed last time are still in place. This is not something that council can talk to each other about, this is not something that council can talk to members of the public about, and this is not something that council should talk to the applicant about. And so if any of those conversations happen without them being purposefully initiated by council, but someone says something to you in a public place at the grocery store, what you need to do is you need to bring that to the public hearing and say, "I had this brief conversation, this is what was said." It then becomes part of the public record for that evening. Thank you so much.
Neil?
May I add to that, then? We've had some ex parte communication, which is why people ask about the lawsuit and the actual owner, so we've already received things like that.
And you have received something from, I believe it was Mr. Murphy, alluding to the lawsuit. What needs to happen and what staff will handle is that that needs to be provided to the applicant, and then that becomes part of the record. And it will be part of the record submitted in front of council and to the applicant for the hearing on July 19th. But thank you for that.
Since we're kind of in this mode right now with initial posting, if it is, if we, like Carol, if we have no choice, like Carol just said, we have to vote, why are we voting on it? If we can't vote it down?
Because your charter requires that that's how you process an ordinance. And if council wants to have some specific questions answered with regard to the legal implications of the questions that have been raised, I'm happy to have that conversation with council, but I would suggest that that be an executive session.
Fair enough. Thank you.
Can I just clarify something? Is a yes vote the requirement? I think that a councilperson could vote no on initial posting, and that would just be part of the record, and if it passes on the initial posting, then that would just be how to vote it down.
It would, but that council member would have to have the reason for their no vote. Okay, thank you. Thank you.
May I ask you?
Yes.
It's my answer.
There you go.
Thank you, I appreciate it. Okay, we're gonna move on, counsel, to public hearings, number eight on your agenda. And first public hearing is relative to ordinance 1328. Counsel, as it seems to be the process tonight, I'm gonna have to recuse myself for personal and financial, possible personal and financial dissection. So I'll turn it over to Mayor Protem, and go take a break. You can sit right there.
Well, I was told to.
Whatever. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. On the agenda 8A tonight is an ordinance. I'm gonna read a statement first, because we're in quasi judicial mode. Council members use...
"Council members use electronic devices to access the materials relevant to the public hearing before us. Be assured that as the common practice of this city council, that these devices are not being used for texting, emailing, or other communications during public hearings." With that said, we have ordinance number 1328 to designate a local historic landmark for the Eldorado Casino. And Ms. Riley?
Ms. Riley? Thank you, Mayor Protem Carr, council members. I would like to begin this presentation this evening with a brief overview of the landmarking program, since we had quite a conversation about this at the previous meeting where we had three other cases come forward. Wanted to give you background that this program was established in 1994, and that it represents Chapter 2.4 of the municipal code, and that the purpose of this code is, has six purposes. It protects and preserves the city's historical and cultural heritage. It creates a citizen committee. There is a five-member board that does meet monthly. And the preservation and management of significant historic artifacts and structures are the focus of this program. It has a purpose for regulating the alterations, relocation, removal, or destruction of historical, historically significant sites and structures. However, that really only applies to those structures that have been landmarked. And currently, we have 10 landmark structures in Woodland Park, three of which are private properties, plus the two new ones that were designated this last year. And tonight would add a sixth private property, should you grant this designation. And of course, it's also for the purpose of supporting educational opportunities, which increase the appreciation of Woodland Park's unique heritage. The Historic Preservation Committee's role and purview, there are nine roles identified in the code. Adopting criteria, which they did in 2003. Reviewing landmark applications. Reviewing and making decisions related to alterations for landmarks. Reviewing and making recommendations on moving, removing, or demolishing a landmark. We have never done that before, so. Assisting property owners with their historic properties. Developing education programs. And we work very closely with the UPAS Historical Society in that role. And we do have a member who is a liaison to the UPAS Historical Society, Larry Black, serving on the committee. We conduct historic surveys regarding the resources in the community. Advise council on preservation-related activities. And pursue financial assistance for preservation programs. So why designate your property? It truly is an honor to be, have this landmark status. It's a fairly elite club. It does require that these properties meet the criteria. And it preserves the character and heritage of Woodland Park for the overall community. From a financial standpoint, it also allows these property owners to be eligible for state historic grant funds. And the city has been a recipient of many of these grant funds for the Cultural Center, the Emmer Cabin, the resource surveys. And so those grant funds are important. But for the private property owner, they're also eligible for tax credits, state tax credits. Up to 20% of the improvements, they can receive a tax credit back. And the governor just signed a new bill, House Bill 1099, that increases that tax credit to up to 30% beginning in the year of 2020. So those are financial benefits, as well as the pride of having a historic structure in Woodland Park that could be landmarked. So what are the disadvantages? I briefly touched on that any alteration to the exterior does get reviewed, not only by the staff, but by the Historic Preservation Committee. And those reviews are done in concert with the property owner. I'll give you an example, the Maytag House just north of here. It's been a landmark for a number of years. The property owner wanted to remove a window, a very small window, that was reviewed by the committee and approved, and so it was just a very natural thing to do. Most of these historic landmark property owners want to maintain the character of their building, so they're not going to do anything too dramatic. There are appeals to city council. Should the committee deny an alteration, then they have the opportunity to come to city council and make their plea. There's an annual maintenance review, and then there's also the review for Historic Preservation Committee to recommend the removal or demolition of a landmark, and the recommendation for city council to process an ordinance. So I mentioned the last time that should a property owner want to remove this designation, they have that opportunity to request it. So any questions about the overall advantages and disadvantages to this?
Counsel? Mr. Sawyer?
I'll go ahead and start. I do have concerns of the annual maintenance review. If there is, who's gonna do that? And if there is something of a concern, who pays for the fix?
Here's how that works, is that myself and Larry Black on the committee do a tour and just a general check on the exterior of these buildings. And then if we have concerns, then we go to the property owner and discuss them, and they put together a maintenance program and address that. So with our existing 10 properties, most of those are owned by the city or the Historical Society, and there's really no issues. Most people who have historic buildings, they take pride in the maintenance of those buildings, and we really don't see issues associated with them.
Okay, so that, so have you had issues where?
No, we have not.
None?
No.
Is there a reason for an annual? Could it be a two-year review, or?
It's in, written in the code that way, so we would like to bring a modified code at some point back to city council, since this has been in place for over almost 25 years. So it would be a good idea to look at something like that.
Okay. It just, it, the last, I don't even think I was at the last council meeting, but the meeting before that, it was kind of a, I didn't really process the situation and look at the historical significance. I just felt like we were, I did approve them, but I felt like we were hand, we were tying their hands behind their back and not allowing them to do what they wanted to do to their property without coming to city council.
But the bottom line is, these are individuals who've come to the city asking for the designation, and they know?
Did they come to the city, or did the city go to them?
Excuse me. Let's stay in order. Councilmember Case first, and then?
I just wanted to ask, so you said there's 10 of them? And we recently approved three additional.
Three additional.
Now, is that included in the 10?
No.
With the comment? Okay. So we have 13 then now?
Correct.
And so the majority of the, of the other 10 before that are owned by the city in our, in our?
The Historical Society.
Correct. Thank you.
They're the buildings in History Park.
Right.
So among those buildings in History Park, three are owned by the city, and actually four are owned by the city, including the jail, and two of them are owned by the Historical Society.
Okay. I just thought, when you said 10, I thought, well, maybe, I think we just added three, and this will make 14 then, that will have the designation, with the most recent three out of the four being privately owned. Because we just designated one that belonged to the city.
Correct.
Last time, or the last time we did.
Right.
Thank you for that.
The Depot.
Can I, is the applicant here, by the way?
Yes, she is, and?
Is that?
Yeah, yeah, that's what I wanted to point out.
Councilmember Harvey has some questions.
Yeah, the app, it was, actually, it was a pleasant surprise that she came to the Historical Preservation Committee and asked for the designation. And this is a great story.
Would this be a good time to bring applicant?
Well, I would like to see the presentation.
Yes.
It's really fascinating, from brothel to preschool. So what can I say? We have a lot of?
Can we bring the applicant up?
If I may do the review of the application, and then Lisa and Brian Osborne will be happy to speak. So we'll dive into the Eldorado Casino. This was Burt Bergstrom's building that was built 86 years ago, and so we're considering the local historic landmark at 312 Northwest Street with a legal description of lots 1 through 3, Eldorado subdivision, which is a replat of lots 1 through 6, plus the adjacent 15-foot alleyway in Block 22, lake addition to the town of Woodland Park. This is zoned neighborhood commercial, and the request is by Brian and Lisa Osborne, the owners. Here is a photo from the Teller County Assessors' records in the 1960s of the Eldorado Casino, which was constructed in 1932. The significance for its importance was dealing with the growth of commerce in Woodland Park, was a very successful business. In fact, it was considered the best casino in the area and very, very popular. It was built by Burt Bergstrom and operated, and of course, Mr. Bergstrom was a very generous man in our community, that donated the Saddle Club property, as well as the Our Lady of the Woods Catholic Church property, after he had acquired that. Bergstrom sold the property to the abbots in 1973. They used it as residence. And then the abbots sold the property to Will and Amy Brown in 1981, and the daycare was established at that time. The architectural integrity to this unique log cabin has changed over time. It did have an addition with a second story and a rear addition. Its significance for its rustic style, including the buttress corners of the log construction, with a large stone chimney and small divided windows. And here are a couple of photos of the very beautiful, unique chimney with this design in the middle, and then the log buttress on the corners is a fairly unique approach for log cabins. This is also probably the same person who constructed the Emmer Cabin, who used a very similar approach with this corner buttress. This is a just quick view of the three lots with the building sitting in the middle of the property. And here are a couple of other photos, one from the 1990s, Teller County Assessors' records, and then a recent photo of the existing building. So these are the findings pursuant to the criteria, and the first criteria deals with the building must be at least 50 years or older, and this is 86 years old. The property, as described in the staff report and the architectural inventory form that was completed in 2006, shows that it is significantly historical, dealing with the growth of commerce and persons associated with its ownership. And that, lastly, although the architectural integrity has changed substantially over time, it still is significant due to its rustic style and character. So with that, the Historical Preservation Committee did hold a hearing on May 7, and they recommend approval of ordinance 1328 to designate the Eldorado Casino, now the preschool in the pines, as a local historic landmark.
Does counsel have any other comments before we bring up the applicant? Councilman Sawyer? I mean, Sonia?
Go ahead. Sonia? Go ahead. I don't have anything to say at the moment. I'd like to hear the applicant.
I'm just not getting it. The last time we were here, we were told this was a Woodland Park historical reservation program?
Correct.
I see the state of Colorado up there. And these tax monies that come in on grants from the state, it's a little bit more than I understood last time, and I just want to clarify this. And the private property receives the benefits of tax monies and grants. Are there any expenses to Woodland Park in the way of tax monies from the community of Woodland Park?
No, sir. This is a tax credit program that the state rebates to the property owner if they do improvements that are eligible for these tax credits, and that they take the effort to apply for them. So to give you example, if the property owner wanted to replace their roof, and they could apply for this project as a tax credit project, and then get a rebate in tax credits.
And I understand the city properties, we, very well maintained, and we used them for museums and railroad building that survived the fire. I understand that one, it's a city property, it's in the park, a great addition, and we maintain those.
Yes.
I get that. I just don't get the privacy ownership of these historical landmarks. That's, that's my take on it, but?
This is an opportunity for a property owner who has a very unique property to be able to be recognized for that value of that property in the community. So it represents our heritage and our character of the overall community. And these are private property owners who are proud to own these properties and to preserve them.
Thank you. Councilmember Harvey?
The only comment I would have made, Paul, is that I'd like you to hear from the applicants. It's truly a pride of ownership. And as I mentioned before, if at some point in time, if they transfer the property to someone else, and there's a reason for any property owner to no longer want that designation, they just ask for the ordinance to be rescinded. It truly is about preserving our unique history. We don't have a lot of brick and mortar buildings like you would see in Victor or Cripple Creek, but we have a heritage of these cabins from the last century. And these are applicants that recognize, they have a special building, and they, they want a little plaque on it. That's all it is to it.
If nothing further right now, could we bring up the applicant, please?
Yes, please.
Hi, my name is Lisa Osborne. I have, let's see, the preschool was built in 1981, and I have been there since 1981. since nineteen eighty-six. So, to say the least, I love that building. I raised my children there, and now, I am raising my grandchildren there. And we have been raising kids there for thirty-two years. Now, we have many second-generation kiddos who I raised their mother or father, and so, that building holds a lot of special memories, a lot of significance to many people in Woodland Park, because a lot of people grew up there. It's been a wonderful facility for a long time, and I want to see that building preserved.
Thank you, ma'am. Any further comments about your motivation outside of what you just said? Historic preservation will assist you with possible grants and things? Do you foresee going for any of those things?
Possibly, because the building is old, it's, you know, so, it will need some upkeep, and it will be expensive. So, in order to preserve it, it would be nice to have those, those grant opportunities.
Are you prepared, if you don't get the grants, to meet all the check marks on this designation?
Yeah, I'll do what I can. Little by little, we have been working on improvements on it for a long time, and anybody that has noticed, we have kept, you know, we keep the yard up, we keep it looking. I'm very proud of it, you know, we keep it looking very nice.
Thank you. Council?
I'd just like to compliment you on your, I'm sorry, I'd just like to compliment you on the way you keep it up, and you love the building.
Thank you.
And congratulations on your history there, and helping folks raise their kids.
You're welcome.
I'll go ahead. My concern is the unintended consequences of being involved in this historical preservation group, or being labeled as historical preservation. So, for example, you want to change out a window, say you want a better window, you want a double-pane window, and that's going to cost you five hundred bucks, but they say, no, we need this, because you're part of this, you need this window, and it costs two thousand. How would you feel then?
Well, I would have to probably have help to get that, to afford that window.
Okay, well, twenty percent ain't going to cover the help.
Well, I tell you what, I have been there now since nineteen eighty-six, and I love the building just how it is.
Oh, no, it's beautiful. I agree with you that way. I'm just getting at the unintended consequences of things that you're not thinking of now. So, I have concerns, is this a need, a want? Did you go to the historical preservation, or did they come to you? What was the order of events?
It is a want. I have, I have been in business with Darlene Ruth. Darlene Ruth is the original owner of nineteen eighty-one.
Right.
And it is something that she has wanted for a long time, never really knew that it could be an opportunity for us. So, I came to you guys in order to try to get our building preserved.
Excellent. And last question, did you sit down with somebody and go over all the regulations, all the rules? Do you completely understand what you're getting into?
I feel that I do.
Councilmember Case?
I just, I just don't see where, everyone is taking such a negative perspective on this, not everyone, I'm sorry. There is an air of negativity associated with a historical designation. My family homesteaded in this, in this state in the eighteen seventies, and that is one of the most important things and unique things about Colorado. And so, if a homeowner understands, I mean, I think you're making mountains out of molehills here. I think they understand the requirements of historic preservation, they've been through the, through the process, they've read the application, they know what that is, and I think that it's a positive, I think it's outstanding that we have a program that recognizes and helps preserve and provides opportunity for our property owners to apply for grants from the state, to get tax credits from the state, for keeping those buildings preserved and in a state of good repair. I don't, I'm uncomfortable with the air of negativity associated with this.
I'm not being negative, I'm just making sure that the applicant understands what they are getting into. I'm not being negative.
Thank you.
It's a beautiful building, and I agree, it should be a historical, and it will go on our map when people come and do tours of this town. So, that, I think that's a great addition, you'll get a nice big plaque. So, I do see that part, but I just want to make sure that you understand. And I'd like to hear from Councilwoman LaBarre on the situation.
If I may, Councilmember Harvey had her hand up first.
Noel, I just wanted to reiterate again, if there comes a point in time that the owner of a private property finds that the designation no longer is something that's good for them, they ask for the ordinance to be rescinded.
Can we, can we, if, are there any more questions for the applicant?
I don't, I don't mind answering.
If not, thank you very much.
Yeah.
I think, just my interjection first, I think a lot of us are concerned that we're trying to do the due diligence effort for the sake of the applicants, we're just, we're just ensuring in our minds that the due diligence has been done, and that's why some of these questions are asked, I believe.
I understand. Thank you.
We have, we have a public comment first, and then, we'll go to...
Sure.
I want you to speak.
Sure.
I'd like to hear from Councilmember LaBarre.
So, I, in previous discussions and votes of the historic landmarks, I just would like council and the public to understand, I grew up in a hundred-and-fifty-year-old farmhouse. The land was deeded to William McCarty through the Mexican-American War. It included all of Washington Park and Denver when it was a buffalo wallow. He was the son of Billy the Kid, so I have great respect and appreciation for historical landmarks. Previously, I had voted no, because when I asked the private property owners if they understood the regulations that they were walking into, they couldn't tell me that they did. Clearly, here, we have a private property owner who's familiar, I'm not sure she's entirely sure about the restrictions that, or the bureaucracy, in my opinion, that she's about to step into. That's just how I feel about private property rights, though. And I think that Noel is reiterating some of my concerns about, is it the owner who's approaching us? Are they familiar with all of the regulations they're about to step into? Can they afford what they're about to step into? Because I know, in my home, it had to be single-pane windows done by a carpenter, who had to be skilled immensely in order to put in rope pulls, and we couldn't just do vinyl windows, and the expense was excessive. And you don't always qualify for the grants or the tax benefits, you compete with other historic landmarks. So, I do think it is in the private property owner's best interest that we know what they're stepping into before we grant it. And I understand with Councilwoman Harvey's remark about, it can come back to the council, and it can be removed, but it still takes a vote of the bureaucracy or the government to allow you to do what you wish with your private property rights. Your rights are now going into the hands of, you know, the Historic Society, and you can't just do what you want anymore. So, some of us are adamant private property rights supporters, and we just want to make sure that we know that you're comfortable with what you're stepping into, you feel you can afford what you're stepping into, and we don't want to restrict you if you're not aware of the restrictions or not comfortable with them. And so, I think that that was part of what Councilman Sawyer was trying to say, and it's not, it's not a negative connotation, it's just being really careful that we know what we're doing up here, because not everyone is familiar with historic landmarks. The private property owners think, yeah, we'll get a plaque, and we'll get grants. It's not that easy. So, some of us are just concerned, we want to be thorough, we appreciate history, I appreciate preserving history, it is important, and these are great buildings, but for me, it's the private property owner's rights that come first, and that's why, and I think Councilman Sawyer was reiterating those concerns as well. And so, that being said, as long as the private property owner is content, they want to do it, and they're adamant and knowledgeable about it, I'm comfortable with it, so.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Sawyer?
So, I'd like to say, just based on that information, the applicant, maybe some advice here, can hold off till the next council meeting if they want more information, or if they'd like to continue with this now. This doesn't have to be done now, it's not critical, the world's not going to stop, and if you need more information, which maybe I advise, you can sit with Sally, you can sit with Lord, and go over it, and make sure, and ask those questions that we're asking. So, I'm not sure if you want to have the applicant come up and give us a yea or nay, but that's...
Would the applicant like to come up and rebut anything they've heard? It's not really, but, okay, thank you.
May I ask?
Councilmember Sonia?
I haven't heard if there's a time limit, if you join the Historical Society, you get a fight. Is there a certain amount of time you have to stay engaged in the Historical Society before you bow out and say, oh, I don't want to?
This is not with the Historical Society. This is the City of Woodland Park's program that is administered through the Historic Preservation Committee. And I know it can get a little confusing, but the society is a 501(c)(3) nonprofit, and the city's role is to oversee the designation of landmarks. The society does not do the landmark designation. And this comes out of the federal program, the nineteen sixty-six Preservation Act, that then allowed for states and local government to apply their landmarking programs. So, it's a very broad, and, program that does enhance and preserve and gives control at the local level. That is the other very important thing, is that it, it's a federal act that empowers the states and the local governments to manage their programs.
Thank you.
One more question, and I will end it.
Councilmember Sawyer?
Okay, thank you. Thank you, Mayor. We seem to have a large cluster of historic landmark requests. Is there a reason for this? We've had three, four, this is the fourth?
It is interesting, and it's...
We seem to do, I haven't dealt with one in four years, and all of a sudden, we got four.
Right. And it's partly because of the Main Street program. The Main Street program has a strong mission for historic preservation, and the chairman of the Main Street Board is here. So, we have been talking with the Dana's Dance folks and Mary Jo Larson about their landmarks on Main Street, so that we can develop an interpretive program and a walking tour that will help draw people and interest to the downtown and create that vitality. All these buildings are on the walking tour, the historic walking tour, and this was all pretty much started, initiated in two thousand and six, when we chose thirty-six sites to have surveys completed, and those were all done with permission by the property owners. So, it is very important to the staff, as well as to the Preservation Committee, that people who participate in these surveys and programs, that they have bought into the program. They understand that this preservation is important to them.
And they're well aware that this is a, I mean, obviously, it's a community effort, but it was initially a Main Street push to, I mean, this will help Main Street become more of a designate, I understand that, so...
Exactly.
Is this a badge of honor for Main Street, or is this something that we're doing for as a community?
It's a badge of honor for all of us.
Okay, good answer. Thank you.
I'd just like to clarify that I am also a very good proponent of personal property rights, and I just, and I don't intend to incendio that there's negativity, it just seems there was a lot of, the word "push" I think is not really probably a very good word to use. Maybe they've just encouraged, or educated, or made the businesses more aware, and maybe that's why they're here. But, but I just want to say that I appreciate what both of you have said, what Paul has said, and what's been shared here. I just think that it's not quite as repressive a program at the local level as you may feel. So, and that comes from experience. I've been around it for years when I was on staff, and it's been a great program. So, I, I just maybe have benefit of a little more knowledge and experience with it.
I don't know about you, but I got a lot more information. So, I'm happy.
I'm glad, because that's what it's all about. So, thank you. I'm finished.
So, Councilmember Sawyer?
Let me, let me just reiterate, our prior city manager mentioned to me that it's best that we have the debate here, so the public can know why we're voting on things the way we're voting on. He said, take your time and talk about it, and that's what I'm doing. So, I understand it is almost nine-thirty, but we got two, three-week break before we have to sit here again for so many hours. But I want to make sure that we understand, next time this comes to council...
Excellent.
We have put all the checks, all the boxes are checked, we understand what we're getting into, we won't have to have this debate again, or discussion. I'm liking this, I think this is great, and if we could talk about it more. This, this is important, this is what we need to do as a council, we need to discuss this stuff, we need to know when citizens come up here, why we're voting for them a certain way. And that way, when they walk out that door right here, they're not going, well, why did Ms. Case or Councilwoman Case vote that way? They'll know why now.
Absolutely. It's called debate.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Councilmember?
Call a question, please. Thank you, Carol.
Just one final, one final comment. We are trying to do our due diligence, as you can see in the public there. We also, I have to put on the record that I asked Director Riley to give us a little more explanation, which we've seen tonight, I appreciate that very much, thank you. And I think it's clear to us than it was the last time, that's our fault, but I'm glad that staff has presented this to us. Without any more questions from council, we're going to open for a public hearing. Mr. Carlson?
Riley has mentioned.
Name an address, please.
Yeah, Bob Carlson, eleven fifty-five Windflower Lane, Woodland Park, Colorado. Looks like I might not really make this speech really short, because I think you really wrestled with the issues, but after last time's vote, like, why, why were several people opposed to it? And I think you've resolved a lot of those issues, certainly as property rights, do the owners know what they're getting to, and that sort of thing. I know when I sign a stack of documents like this, buying a house, I don't read through it all, the lawyer says, yeah, this, this, and this, and I trust him. And I'm hoping that, and of course, when I buy a house, I'm stuck with it. And in this case, as Carol has pointed out, and Kelly, that you can back out of it, but I would, it can be a little confusing as to how historic preservation is handled in this committee, the community. Sally pointed out the Historic Preservation Committee, and their role is to identify what are historic houses that could get accepted. Then you've got the Heights Peak Historical Society, they run the museum down here, they celebrate history. They'll have the annual potato soup dinner to celebrate where we were one of the largest producers of potatoes in the United States until Idaho took over. And then, you've got the Main Street, whose role, I mean, Main Street comes out of the National Historic Preservation Trust, National Trust for Historic Preservation, sorry about that, which, one of the top goals of that was to... that, which, one of the top goals of that was to preserve old downtowns across the states which were being plowed under. And, and so, that is a very strong role from us, but as something that would revitalize and celebrate the history of our town. So, we all coordinate, interrelate. And so, when we do have downtown businesses, which Main Street really works with a lot, we, we encourage them to do this. And we may have been encouraging since 2006, and finally, a ball is rolling. All it takes is the first one to do it, and then the next one comes in. And, and that's why I think you're seeing a number coming in. You'll probably see a few more coming in, too. So, I'm glad we've had this debate that established that the property owners have not lost any rights in doing this, and it's really going to be good for downtown, when we have these walking tours and we can say, "The history of this building was, it was built by, the architect was this famous person," all of that kind of stuff. And this building tonight has some very interesting history, as Carol pointed out. Didn't quite come out in the presentations, but...
Casino, brothel.
I'll make sure that Norma puts it in the paper. So, anyway, I just wanted to second what, at least endorse, from Main Street's perspective, how this really would help the revitalization of downtown and celebrate our history. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. We have no other people listed for public comment. Do we have anybody? Mr. Murphy.
Sorry, Paul.
Name an address, please.
Elijah Murphy, 204 West Midland Avenue, Woodland Park. I lived in Europe for a lot of years, and it's one of the things that I miss most in the United States, is the depth of history that we see in Europe. Okay? When I go back to, when I go back to New England to visit my wife's family, I see houses that are kept as they were from the 1600s, even today. It's a very expensive process, but people take pride in it, okay? I'm one of those people that really want my place designated one of these days, if I can ever gain access to the property. Okay? I really think that city council has a vested interest in supporting this program, keeping our tourism. It's not just about keeping their buildings original. It's also about the heritage, okay? Because in Europe, I, I stayed in a fortress in Copenhagen that was built in the 1100s and had these huge, beautiful wooden doors that I wanted to take home with me, but they belonged to the place. But I really wish, I really urge you guys to help support this. And I, being a member of Main Street, I see it, I like it, and it's something that we need to do, preserve our heritage. It's not just about the building. It is about the heritage and our history, and bringing people here to enjoy it.
Thank you, Murph.
Thank you. Seeing no other hands raised, I'm going to close the public hearing at this point.
Thank you. All the...
Motion's...
Call it?
Yeah, move to approve it. Move to approve ordinance, whatever it is. 1328.
May I have you read the ordinance, please?
Absolutely.
For the public who can't see it.
Yes. The ordinance is ordinance number 1328, to designate a local historic landmark for the El Dorado Casino, Preschool in the Pines, located at 312 Northwest Street, with a legal description of lots 1, 2, and 3. El Dorado subdivision zone neighborhood commercial, as requested by Osborne Property Management, LLC, Lisa and Brian Osborne owners.
Thank you. All right, please. Thank you.
Levy. Excuse me. Sonier.
Me? Yes.
Sawyer.
Yes.
Carr.
Yes.
Case.
Yes.
Harvey.
Yes.
Labar.
Yes.
Thank you. Motion carries 6-0.
Thank you. My reign has ended. We have to go get the mayor. It passed. Okay. Thank you, Bill. We move on. Can you hear? We move on to item 8C.
Did you, did you think we forgot you, Mayor?
Yes.
Thank you, Mayor Levy. My name is Laura Pellegrino, and I'm the city planner. We are here tonight to discuss an application received by the planning department to allow for camping in a non-designated camping area. So, the application is pursuant to municipal code 812. City council may permit camping in self-contained camper trailers, recreational camping vehicles, and pickup campers in designated locations other than licensed campgrounds. So, the request was for overnight camping for up to 50 units in conjunction with the UTRAIL Stampede Rodeo from noon on July 10th through noon on July 16th. And the applicant is proposing overnight camping in a location where camping has been permitted in the past, with other rodeos and other special events on that site. So, notice of tonight's public hearing for this request was sent by mail to all adjacent property owners within 150 feet of this application, of this site. It was published in the Pike's Peak Courier, and a poster was posted on-site related to this application. To date, staff has received no written comment regarding this request, and finds the request compliant with all of the camping requirements of Section 1812 of the municipal code. And staff does recommend that city council move to approve the request by the UTPASS Saddle Club for onsite camping concurrent with the UTRAIL Stampede Rodeo, TUP number 18040110, subject to compliance with the application as submitted and the following conditions. I do have 10 conditions, and I'm just going to read them for the record, if that's all right. Condition number one, camping shall occur only from noon July 10th through noon July 16th, 2018. Number two, camping shall be permitted at 19250 US Highway 24, in those areas designated for camping on the site plan as submitted with the application. Access to the city lift station located at the entrance to the grounds shall remain unobstructed at all times. Number three, camping shall be reserved for security vendors, event participants only, with no more than 50 units permitted onsite at any given time. Number four, camping units shall be self-contained, and may include camper trailers, horse trailers, recreational camping vehicles, and pickup campers. Number five, all water, wastewater from camping must be collected. No disposal of wastewater and gray water is allowed at this site, and no connection to city water is available. Number six, on- and off-site trash, garbage, or debris shall be cleaned up upon completion of the camping, and shall be coordinated with and enforced by the property owner. Number seven, the applicant property owner shall be responsive to complaints, if any. Number eight, all lighting within the camping area shall be downcast, shielded, and turned off by 9:00 PM. Number nine, generators, if any, shall be turned off by 9:00 PM. And finally, number 10, campers and event participants shall be subject to municipal code 941, which deals with noise. That concludes my presentation. Mayor Levy, are there any questions of staff?
I don't have any. Go ahead. I told you I'd talk a lot before this council meeting. So, how many years in a row has this event been going on?
I can tell you at least two. It happened last year as well, but many more than that. And unfortunately, the representative has left.
Yeah, we scared her away.
Let me just help you out a little bit, everybody, because it's right across the street from me. They've done it a number of years. I can't tell you how many, but there's never been an issue. Very respectful, great people, great event for the city. I just can't imagine why we wouldn't go forward in this regard. They've, they've got a proven record, and the whole thing is, you know, it's one of the great events for our community, so...
And, and Mayor, that's kind of what I was alluding to, so we can make this quick, and you helped it out, so thank you very much.
Make a motion then.
Motion to approve, or motion to approve request by Mary Jo Larson, UTPASS Saddle Club, to allow onsite camping from July 10th through the 16th, 2018, and as presented.
Thank you, Paul. We are in public comment. If anybody would like to come forward now. Mr. Labar. You started this show, and you're going to end the show.
Thank you, Mayor. Pete Labar, in this case, 19251 East US Highway 24. I don't have any objection to, to the request. I do have a, a request associated with this, and there has been problems in the past. We have had campers park on our property at 19251 East US Highway 24 during this event. We have contacted the police department, and the police department failed to do anything about it. We were told that we had to contact the, contact a towing company. We contacted several towing companies. In particular, we contacted Fred's Towing. They said they can't tow it because they don't have any room. So, we had people trespassing on our property with no, no attempt by anybody in the city to have those campers removed. And this happened last year during this time. So, my request is that if something like this happens, where we've got people during this time period trespassing on private property, that we have the police department at least go and issue them a citation, or tell them that they have to remove their, their camper.
Chief, how can we manage that better?
Quite easily. This is the first I've heard of it. So, if you're not getting the resolution, please come to me personally, and we'll take care of it.
I'd be happy to do that.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Anything else?
Would it be easy to mark the, the line, the lot line?
I don't believe that would be necessary. I believe the issues that Mr. Labar raised can easily be handled by either our cordon enforcement officer or our police department. The site is fenced anyway, so these people were parking off property.
Ah, gotcha, gotcha.
Way out there.
Thank you.
Okay, we have a motion in a second. Anybody else want to comment? Not Suzanne?
Thank you. Sonier?
Yes.
Sawyer?
Yes.
Carr?
Yes.
Case?
Yes.
Harvey?
Yes.
Labar?
Yes.
Levy?
Yes.
Thank you. Motion carries unanimously.
Thank you, Suzanne. Laura, thank you very much. And we move on. We have no, no, no new business tonight. It's apparently hard to say. Public comment on items not on the agenda. I've got a couple people signed up. It's James Baker here. Welcome, sir. If you just give us your name and address, we would appreciate it.
Hi, I'm James, James Baker, 910 South Park Street, Woodland Park. Coming to speak with council, due to recent changes, out in County, there's now quite a lot of traffic on several streets in the southern part of Woodland Park, particularly Park Street, Melisen, as people avoid the new closure. It's now several hundred vehicles. But what I'm really coming to council for is a very specific matter there, the speed of vehicles. I've seen vehicles going 40 just this afternoon, 45, I think even faster at some times. And particularly, I'm on the third ridge on South Park Street. As you may know, back several decades ago, there was a tragedy on a ridge where a car came very fast over a ridge on Park Street and killed a young man. Two of the three ridges were closed at that point. My third ridge was left open. It hasn't been a problem. People have been driving residential speeds until recently. The particular danger here, there's very little sight as you come over that hill. If you're coming over at 45 miles an hour, it's impossible to be prepared to stop if there's somebody coming out, well, my driveway, or out of Blue Spruce, just a short distance down from the brink. It's scary enough coming out with people doing 25. I try to be very careful coming out. I think this matter, especially in this location, calls for some urgent work. Police has been doing a very nice job of doing police work, and I thank the police for that. But something, police can't be there 24 hours a day. There's quite a lot of traffic constantly. I am worried about a tragic event, some car getting T-boned at high speed, or a pedestrian, or somebody swerving to avoid the deer as they come over much too fast. I'd like to suggest the council urgently consider things like traffic calming measures on Park Street due to this experiment down in County, that I think even if County changes what it does, we're now likely to continue to have higher traffic levels, some of these people who are driving faster now that they found these roads. I've noticed that on Sheridan, it's my impression, that the four-way stops, as Kip and I discussed, have led to people driving residential speeds. I feel they've done a very good job at keeping people staying down. They're not driving larger distances before stopping. It's not a big deal if you're doing 25 miles an hour to come to a four-way stop and go. I think when it's a longer stretch, such as Park Street, a good quarter mile long, people get going. They may not realize that hill is so extremely dangerous. I'd like to ask council really consider some urgent measures to add traffic calming, such as an additional four-way stop on Park Street, just to see if we can keep people slower. I've talked with police, and they've come up with some good ideas. I appreciate that. But I would like to suggest augmenting that with traffic calming measures, perhaps another four-way stop or other such measures, just to do that. I'm a member of search and rescue, and I carry more dead bodies than I care to, and so I hope I don't have one in my front lawn, so...
Thanks for your input. Really appreciate it.
Thank you to council.
Yeah, thank you very much. We'll talk about it. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Miles?
What's?
Thank you. This issue with West Value, with West Valley has been coming up for a while. At the end of the day, not everybody's going to be happy. It was closed down because the residents on that area were concerned with the speeds on their area, on their road, 40, 50 mile an hour speed, blind corners, and a bunch of other issues there. So, the solution was to shut down that section of road to hopefully divert the traffic or slow that down. So, that area is actually pretty happy, from what I understand. It's just shifted the problem to the rest of the neighborhood. As county commissioners have mentioned, it's going to be constantly evaluated, and it's going to be an educational process for those folks. So, I'm hoping that over time, that folks stop using that area. We do have a number of officers that have been in the area. They've done a number of traffic stops for stop signs as well as speeding. We are going to continue to work on a community action report, so that we are working in that area, as well as put our speed trailer down there to help remind people to slow down. But it's not going to get fixed overnight. It's going to be an educational process, and it's something we're going to have to constantly evaluate. And I will work with Kip and see if there's some additional things that we can come up with, but I'm not prepared to answer fully on this topic today.
Mr. Baker, I'm sure that doesn't totally satisfy you, but understand that, at least, right, we're, the city police are working with the county and doing everything we can at this point, and we'll continue to monitor that. Trust me, the safety of our citizens is number one for this council. And so, we'll continue to move in that direction, and I know that the chief will monitor it. And if you see any, anything new that you're not pleased with, please communicate with the chief. Okay? Thank you very much. I've got one more. Carol Traders.
Neil? I'd like to add to that or ask a question. I did get a phone call from someone in that area, and he's called me three times, and we've talked a couple times, and he wanted me to bring this up and just let you know that he has concerns. I'm glad to hear that something's being done with it. I'd also like to ask, with Kip's one week of, of deep knowledge of public works, what is our speed bone policy?
I would guess, traffic study and evaluated that route. In this area, though, there, there's stop signs at every intersection, or yield signs. It is, just like Mr. Baker said, a very steep hill. It's hard to put a stop sign at those other intersections, because it's so steep. You can imagine, when, in the winter...
Yeah, you couldn't get back up.
You're not going to get back up it, and vice versa, going down it. And it is very steep. I think, like the chief said, it's an educational piece for the people who are still trying to use West Valley, and they'll learn that it takes longer to take the city streets than it does just to take US 24.
Right. So, the call was around Karen Lane, or not Karen Lane, Laurel Lane, thank you.
Yes.
That there, because of the...
You're not going to get back up it. And vice versa, going down it. And it is very steep. I think, like the chief said, it's an educational piece for the people who are still trying to use West Valley, and they'll learn that it takes longer to take the city streets than it does just to take US 24.
Right. So the call was around Karen Lane, or not Karen Lane. Laurel Lane, thank you.
Yes.
That there, because of the new barricade, I guess I could call it, now they're just taking other routes, and they're still driving pretty quickly. So I'm not, I didn't hear about the hill thing yet. That's, I was young. I rode, roller coaster rode in Black Forest. That was fun. But what is our speed bump policy? How can, besides a traffic study, can a, can someone come to, to a city and request a speed bump in an area?
We don't per se have a speed bump policy.
No, and it's, everybody, anybody can request anything.
Well, yeah.
And trust me, we get those requests a lot. You know, it just needs to be looked at by a traffic engineer.
Does it, does it take someone getting hit by a car to do this, or do we need to be proactive? What's, is there, what's the solution?
Well, the solution is, as Miles stated, there are increased patrols, so as the county, putting out the radar trailer to, so people can realize how fast they're going.
Right.
You know, just like Mr. Baker said, it's about a quarter mile stretch, it's about 1,000 feet length of road that there is no stop sign on. That's not too long, so it's hard to get up to speed that fast in that short distance, especially if you're going uphill.
Right.
Now, if you're going downhill, it's just the opposite. But we can look at it, it's just, I mean, you could put a speed bump in the middle of the road, and it may help, it may not.
Well, what I'm concerned is that I think the county just moved the problem over to the city. That's all they did. They just said, here, let's put this, let's block our road. Now everybody's going to drive on the road over one, which is now city, so now we have to deal with it. Did we have a discussion with the county on this, or they just decided to do it on their own?
No, we, we were very involved with the county. When residents call in, we try to answer those, and we also direct them to the county to answer those. The county road that was closed was due to basically high speeds.
You have people driving fast.
And now you have them diverting through other parts of city roads with a lot of stop signs, and just like the chief said, it's, they're going to realize that they're going to be stopping at five stop signs when they could just go through three stop lights on the highway.
Okay. Well, I'm just.
Could we let staff do their job and evaluate the, it's been made by the resident and bring it back to council? We're not going to solve it here tonight.
And correct me if I'm wrong, Miles, the, the speed trailer does record speeds, and we can actually see if there is speeding issues.
Well, there we go.
Absolutely. We can absolutely do that. We can record the speeds. And what we found out for the people that we have stopped down there is, they're frustrated. They've been going through that area for X number of times. They just found a barricaded road. Now they're trying to find their way out of there. And so the people that we've stopped and/or ticketed are pretty upset when we deal with them. And so it's going to be a learning process. And yes, the speed bump is one solution that's out there, but it doesn't solve everything. My experience, speed bumps make people feel good because they've got a bump they can look at. And sometimes people slow down for it, other times they rip the back end off their vehicle. So there's a number of options we can look at. I'm more than happy to bring back what we've done at our next council meeting. I'm just not going to expect a simple, quick answer to this. As commissioners said, they're looking at it over the next six months on a regular basis, and that's what we're going to be doing as well, as this problem's been shifted into the city. So like I said earlier, it's going to take a little while to educate the folks, and my hope is that over time that they do figure out a better way through town. And, you know, none of us want to see anybody get injured, but things like this will take time to do it right.
And then, and then the last thing I'd like to add is typically you have, when we put in a speed bump, we get more complaints about people accelerating after the speed bump and the noise of the engine. So it goes both ways.
Unintended consequences.
Yep.
Mayor Levy, is this something that council desires to be on the next agenda?
No, I don't think so. When we have, when we have reports from staff, we can get a report. When Miles is ready to report, he'll come back to us.
Thank you.
I'm sure. It's funny, Noel, because I got a call from someone that lives on Valley.
Right.
And like, we had something to do with, not so much, but thank you for closing that road, and it's so nice and quiet over here, and so it depends on who you talk to.
Yeah, now we're getting the calls from the people next, on the next road over.
Okay, the last person I had, and I don't know if she's here or he, Carol Trader? Okay. Not here. Okay, great.
Debbie.
Deb Miller? Is that you?
Yes.
Did you sign up?
I was busy talking, sorry. I wanted to come before council tonight and let you know, this will be going out in our grapevine tomorrow, but I think it's important for the community to know, and those who are able to watch online, that starting next week, there are two special events that are going on. Charis Bible College will be hosting the Business Summit from Monday, the 11th through the 13th, and that's going to bring in an anticipated 400 extra people to our community. Starting then on Thursday, the 14th, through Saturday, the 16th, they will be doing the Sowers Conference, and that will bring in an estimated 900 people to those conferences. And the reason we are letting people know is we want our businesses to be prepared. There'll be extra people in town, there'll be patronizing restaurants, things such as that. And so we want to give a heads up, not only on top of the tourist traffic, but we will have these two special events going on as well. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Okay, we'll move on to mayor's reports. Just a couple things. One, most of you probably have read, but the, the city and, actually two counties, Opaso County and Douglas County, received the Infra Grant to go ahead with the gap project for Highway 25. If you're not familiar, in about 60 days, they'll start the project of widening Highway 25 from Monument to Castle Rock on both sides of the street. So that'll be about a two-year project, and it's scheduled to start sometime around the 15th of August. So get ready for the, the issues that go along with that, and, and think positively. And a couple years from now, we'll have a much better situation relative to I-25. All I have tomorrow is farmer's market starts at 7 o'clock? 7 o'clock? 8 o'clock? Sorry. 8 o'clock, Memorial Park, greatest farmer's market in the world. Val?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. A couple things shortly. The Woodland Park, Keep Woodland Park Beautiful is working with the teen center on putting in a recycling center, and they're, they're looking at designing with a intern, basically, student intern. There's a lot of activity over there with involvement with the board. It's kind of nice to see, I'm new on that, so it's kind of nice to see a real active and do, the board does a lot of due diligence. So they're looking to put it out near the trash can out in the parking lot out back here, and working with the city staff, of course, to, to get that done. Second item, this is something I've been working on with other people on council for a month. As we who lived through it know only so well, our 2018 council meetings have often lacked sufficient structure and decorum, reported by many citizens that have talked to me, including others on council and city staff. For the past several months, our citizens have had to endure some public behavior during council meetings unbecoming. This has been reported in the media, including print media, which instigated a bunch of us looking at this problem. Many of us believe that this council needs to start setting an example for the city where we have been lacking inconsistency for the future. Council needs to get back to business only and show our new ways to the community for their competence level to be raised in our future level of professionalism. These are the thoughts of many of us on council, have heard from our constituency and felt ourselves. For those reasons, some of us on council have been working to come up with a set of written rules and procedures for city council to show the community that we are serious about running a proper business, like meeting each time together as council and taking control of our elected role as representatives of the people as a body. The charter clearly states in Section 3.7 that the council shall determine the rules and procedure governing meetings. A few minor singular issues at this have been resolved in the past upon an investigation, but a comprehensive set of procedures and rules in one place is needed for future council proceedings. A written comprehensive historical document will also serve future council to orient themselves to the protocols, rules, and procedures expected well after all of us have left city service and the council, and serve well during council orientations. To assist the council in creating this set of procedures, we've taken the past month to research the available templates for similar municipalities. We researched the complete set of Woodland Park resolutions for precedents. To alleviate much creative work, several digital versions were located on the internet to use as templates for various sections of the draft resolution distributed tonight that you have in your hands. These are from home rule municipalities in Colorado and around the USA. Colorado revised statute specifics were substituted in the resolution made for compliance with Colorado law and our charter. I present this resolution to be determined 8:30 right now, I guess, Series 2018, for placement on the June 28th council, 2018 council agenda for council to be adopted at that meeting. That's three weeks from now. This resolution is meant to supplement but not be in conflict with the charter, where it lacks specificity and clarity for all rules and procedures not detailed in the charter. This interval in 2000, until June 28th, gives all of council and the city attorney and manager and city clerk an opportunity to find any conflicts with the charter or state and national law, and any edits to discuss via email to the city clerk to forward to the others in council before consideration on June 28, 2018. Most of the text of the resolution proposed comes from a template found in existence that has been vetted already with other municipalities, Robert's rules, and my study of the CRS and our charter. Written rules of procedure for council in the form of the resolution is common practice for most governing municipalities and counties. The title of the proposed resolution that you have in your hand is "A Resolution Establishing and Revising the City Council Rules and Procedure." It seeks to gain control of decorum and the people's agenda in running more businesslike council meetings. We ask that this draft resolution be placed in the June 28, 2018 agenda as new business. I also request that the council and city attorney examine this guiding council resolution for errors, unlawful clauses, or suggestions as significant form and context suggestions. This, this digital draft, digital version of this draft will be distributed to council and the city attorney by the city clerk tomorrow. Thanks for your consideration.
Kelly?
Thank you. I received something today from a citizen. I have no feeling one way or another. I've just been asked to read this. It's short and sweet. Honorable Mayor Levy, would you coach a major baseball game without a pitcher, the catcher, and the third baseman? Would you then expect your team to play a winning game? On April 28, 2018, it's, I think there's a typo there, I submitted a written request to city council to consider implementing a temporary moratorium on cases brought before council by the Department of Planning and Zoning and the Planning Commission. I respectfully ask council again to please consider implementing a short-term moratorium. Since my previous request, the city has now lost more employees, including the licensed city engineer slash public works director. She put and, but I believe that's the same person. With that input from three key positions of city manager, city engineer, and public works director, which I believe is only two, our councilmen are less informed to make solid decisions on planning and zoning cases. These decisions have long-range impacts on the taxpayers, residents, and the applicants. Please consider my suggestion. Respectfully, Patricia Stinner, 1140 Michael Lane. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Carol?
Hillary?
Paul?
May I say thanks to the staff and everything? I have had a peek-a-boo at this. I do agree with Val, it will bring quorum to council meeting. It's an appropriate amount of time to allow everybody to read through it and understand it. And it would take issues like Kelly had received into consideration in an appropriate business-like manner. So with that said, I hope that the other members of council will review it, look at it, and come back with suggestions and opinions. Pig roast on Saturday, veterans, American Legion's de Cristolet, please attend. It benefits the veterans, and it's a good event. City cleanup Saturday. Help, help clean up Woodland Park, make it beautiful, Main Street. And I do appreciate our finalist on city manager enduring this meeting and the day. Deeply do appreciate it. We actually planned it this way so you could get a flavor for what we do. Okay? Thank you very much for the people who participate, and thank you, Pete, for your input. Deeply appreciate it. Have a good night.
Noel?
So what I was going to state, we already talked about with chief and with Kip, I do appreciate Val bringing this to council. I was hoping we could go bigger with this, look for more, this is just procedures for this meeting. What I was hoping to look for is more on how council member, a policy for council members in general, with social media, how we act with the public, what are any ramifications or punishments if we do certain things in public? I mean, there's a lot of, a lot outside of this that we can address, too. I believe this is a good start. Eat an elephant, one bite at a time. You don't try to do the whole thing, so this is a good start. I think this council is, is on the right path. Val and I did talk about this briefly. I was in training all day. This is the first time I've actually looked at it, and I'm a pretty quick reader, and this is really, this is really good, Val.
Thank you. And it is meant, it's a draft for.
Right, I understand it's a draft, and Aaron needs to look at it, and we need to actually go through it with a fine, fine tooth and comb, and so. Our two applicants, thank you for being here. I don't normally talk this much. I absolutely do not talk this much. They can all agree. Look at Neil, he's looking at me. So thank you for being here.
I just have one more comment. Could you be more specific? The citywide cleanup is Saturday, and it starts at 9 o'clock at the pavilion between the library and the cultural center, and at noon or even a little before, there will be a barbecue, compliments of Keep Woodland Park Beautiful, and I would encourage people to come. And I will see you there.
And you will sign up at 8.
Thank you to both of you for sitting here.
Sign up at 8 o'clock.
That's all I have, Mayor.
I have to be there at 8. Oh, I'm sorry.
Okay. City attorney report?
Nothing.
City manager report?
I have a few things, Mayor Levy. First, I'd like to ask the council, am I hearing a consensus that you would like this placed on the next council meeting's agenda?
I would like to see a workshop, kind of a thing, because I think we could work through it and read it and bring back suggestions, maybe have a, just a couple-hour workshop to look through it, so that we're not trying to iron out a wordsmith in a public meeting. That's just my suggestion.
And I have another suggestion, too. I have no objection to seeing it on the 28th, but I know CML has individuals who could advise us on, and there are councils that have manuals, and perhaps we could get, if we were to have a special meeting, bring someone from CML to talk about, you know, many of these things are covered by statute, they're covered by our charter, but capturing them in a manual, I think, is a great idea, and maybe if we could have someone who's done this before.
And let me just say, I've written, let me, let me just address that if I would. I've written policies for councils, and they vary from council to council because the needs that prompt them vary from council to council. This council hasn't had policies since 2005. Perhaps they did before that. So the needs weren't there to prompt them. So I think you can start with any variety of well-written set of policies. And it's not necessarily a CML document. It is looking to where you think you have similarity with the size of city, the sorts of issues they have. And quite honestly, the level of advice they get from their city attorney, there are, there are some excellent drafters out there, and they do especially good work, and it's not anything that you have to reinvent the wheel for, which is what I think Mayor Protim Carr is alluding to.
Yeah, I got it.
He has some good resources.
I got it off.
I think probably you can. I think probably you can start with any, any set as a template to begin your work with. And it may be that CML has sort of over the, over time developed kind of a more generic version, and I'd be happy to check with them, to see if they have that. But I, I think it's very important to have this kind of a conversation in a work session, because it's really a roll-up-your-sleeves kind of a discussion.
I would also like to wait, I would like to use this or whatever, I appreciate what you have done, don't get me wrong. I think it's something that needs to involve our new, our new city manager as well, because I would want, we, we can get them involved in the process instead of catching them up in the process.
That's another, I think that's another-
So this is a council procedure, it's not a city manager procedure. We have a city manager sitting right now. It's going to take some time for this to go anyway. We've got three weeks to look at this.
Absolutely.
There is a consensus to, with this format. This format, by the way, was, was not me out of whole cloth. This was, this was derived from CML and statutory cities blended. And so it's already been kind of vetted that way. I'm not taking offense or anything, I'm just telling them. A lot of this work was done by other places. Very good work. Because I researched all of it.
So the question is, do we want to bring it as a resolution on the 28th, or do we want to do a work session?
My, my, I'm sorry.
Go ahead.
My thought was, and I know you all have just seen this out of the blue, partially because it was finished this morning, but my thought was that we put it on the calendar. We have three weeks to go back and forth with our usual stuff through the city clerk with, hey, I'd like this, Noel mentioned something already. Each one of us will have ideas. This was areas, as, as the city attorney mentioned, that I identified as specific to our situation. A lot of these, talk about duties of the mayor, duties of the pro tem, we really have that well-covered in the charter already. So I left those kind of things out of some of these documents, because why repeat them? Now if you change one, you got to change them both. So my idea, and I'm just saying this, is that everybody should have input, everybody should, this is a template, okay? So we can-
Question is, do you want to do it in a work session, or do you want to do it in council? So I think that's the question right now. We all want to do it. Are we going to spend the time at a council meeting?
No.
Or let's do this in a work session? What are your thoughts?
Absolutely. That's my, that would be my-
I would agree with work session. Carol?
Work session.
Hillary?
Work session's good.
Paul? Let's set up a work session, we'll get a, some kind of doodle pull, pull from Suzanne, and maybe we can set up the work session prior to the 28th, and be ready to go for that meeting.
Oh yeah, I want a work session too.
Good.
So my idea was it doesn't just, we, we should look at this beforehand, I mean, and have ideas bouncing back and forth.
We'll do that before the work session.
Okay, good.
Absolutely.
I agree.
And we can do that individually.
Yeah.
Bring our thoughts. So I'm going to do it tomorrow.
So Suzanne, if you'll-
Oh, I'm not.
-give us a few options for a work session, that will take care of this problem. And what else do you have?
Thank you, Mayor Levy. I also would like to thank both candidates for being here this evening, and I can assure you that council meetings typically do not go this long. And I look forward to spending time with both of you tomorrow, and I can't wait to have a city manager hired. I just want to put that out there. I'm really looking forward to it. I would like to, I would like to congratulate Chief Miles DeYoung tonight. This past weekend, he was in Washington DC, receiving from American Military University his master's degree in criminal justice. And so I would like to congratulate him. Not only did he receive his master's degree, but his wife told me that he maintained a 4.0 average.
Oh wow. Congratulations. That's one I'm not surprised.
Second, the city's received a grant for $1,938, the city clerk's office, and I just quickly want to tell you what this is for. As you know, the city clerk's office has been scanning all of our ordinances into the computers, so the public can look at them. Well, we got to 1965, and prior to 1965, I brought a demo here for you guys to see. Our records start in 1891. So these are the ordinances and the minutes that we had from meetings back in the day. There's no way for us to scan these. This grant is for us to hire a company, a specialist, that will come in and take these old books, scan them digitally for us, so we can preserve them electronically, and then perhaps turn these over to the Historical Society. So I just wanted council to know, I don't know if you've ever looked at these books, they're pretty funny. One of the first ordinances that was established in the city of Woodland Park in the late 1800s was about not being nude in town. It was about public nudity, and it's just, it's just so fun to read. So if you ever want to come in, you can sit and look through them. So that's the second thing. Third, Cindy Keating is going to give us a quick update on the Aquatic Center, on enrollment, membership, and she also has someone she'd like to introduce this evening.
Thank you Suzanne, and good evening, Mayor Levy and council members. At the last council meeting, Mike Farina presented to you the 2017 year-end financials and the first quarter for 2018 financials for the Aquatic Center. I wanted to share with you guys some numbers. My numbers are starting from January of 18 and running through the end of May of 2018. We have sold 6,812 daily admissions, 74 passes, and the passes include the annual, six-month, and three-month passes, and 911 punch cards. On average, we serve about 140 of the pass holders on a daily basis, and so the pass holders are the people that have the punch cards or the actual passes. Not in, that's not including our daily users as well. Our admission revenues are running about 37% of our budget. Our program revenues are running about 31% of our budget, for 42% of the time. Our birthday party rental, gift certificate sales and locker rentals are exceeding our expectations in revenues. And as we feel, we project that we're just entering our busy season, the summer season. Last Sunday, we had our first Splash into Summer event. Unfortunately, the weather didn't agree with us that it was summer, but we still had a really good turnout with about 60 people attending that. On Monday, we started our summer learn-to-swim programs, and then on June 14th, we're going to be hosting a US Masters Swim Clinic, which was very popular when we offered that back in March. I'd be happy to answer any questions that you may have in regards to the Aquatic Center. We have silver sneakers, and it's, a lot of people call it silver slippers. But it is silver sneakers, and we do offer silver sneakers for our programs. And we have, let me just pull my little chart out here real quick. In this timeframe, about 665 users of the silver sneakers. And so they get to attend any of our water fitness programs at no charge, and Silver Sneakers reimburses us $2.50 per participant per visit.
Anything else, council? Cindy, thanks very much.
I have one more.
Please.
I'm sorry, not sorry, I'm really, I'm excited to do this. First, let me get my papers together. It's my pleasure this evening to introduce to you Steve Varner. Steve Varner is a retiring sergeant major from the United States Army after 30 years of service. His area of expertise is in operations management for Army Aviation, and has a BS in aeronautics. He has extensive experience in project management, planning, training, management, leadership, development, and team building. Steve is participating in the Veterans Local Government and Management Fellowship, which is a Department of the Defense Military Installation Approved Career Skills Program that provides transitioning service members with management training and hands-on experience in the local government environment, with the goal of preparing them to, for a smooth transition into local government careers. Steve is currently interning with us in Parks and Recreation to gain experience in our area, and that will help facilitate his desire to provide a service to city populace in outdoors, in outdoor venues. So a little bit of the work that we've been having him do, he's been with us, what, about three weeks? He's worked with planning for a little bit, because I was on vacation still, and then he helped us, he's helped us with our special events, the Splash into Summer, the Last Day of School Celebration, Rocky Skills Challenge. He's also helped our Parks Buildings and Grounds crew move some mulch around Memorial Park. And he's also helped front, cover our front desk at Park and Rec while Kelsey was on vacation. So we're just kind of giving him a wide range of experience in Parks and Recreation. Tomorrow, he gets the opportunity to go with the teen center to the Catamot, as they do some outdoor recreation there. I think he's going to really enjoy that. And Steve, if you wouldn't mind coming to the podium and introducing yourself, and call us if you have any questions for him.
Mayor Levy, council members. I'm a country boy from North Idaho. I grew up from about 90 miles from the Canadian border, so being in the mountains is my, is my, where I feel comfortable. That's why I feel drawn to Woodland Park. I want to say thank you to Sally Riley and Cindy Keating for giving me this opportunity to get in and experience, and see how the local government works. Working on the federal side, you know, is completely different. We could, we could, I could tell you all kinds of stories. I enlisted in the Army way back in 1988. I filled every enlisted rank you can through my career from E1 to E9. I am currently a brigade operations sergeant major. We have 2,800 soldiers in our unit. I've been a battalion commander sergeant major of a 700 and 900 soldier unit, where I was the senior enlisted advisor to the battalion commander. And as Cindy told you, I have lots of experience in operations. So I'm looking forward to my change in life here. I'm a, I'm a family man, I have a wife of 19 years and one daughter. Looking for a small city environment to get settled in, and looking for a way to serve and continue to give and be a certain leader.
Thank you for your service.
Steve, real quick, sorry to call you Steve, I didn't, I didn't get your last name, but sir, I'll say this, sometimes I never know who's thanking who. We should thank you, first of all, for your service, 30 years, amazing, and you're in a community that gets tremendous support for our military. And so, welcome aboard, and thanks for everything you're doing at, at City Hall with Cindy and with Sally, and I think you'll find you've got a great bunch of people to work with, and, and we are honored to have you. So thank you very much for being here.
Thank you, Mayor.
Yeah, you bet. You bet.
Mayor Levy, that's all I have this evening.
Thank you, Cindy.
Thank you.
Thank you. Suzanne?
That's it, Mayor.
That's it, Mayor. Okay, those are the words we were waiting to hear. Okay, thank you all for coming, this meeting's adjourned.
Thank you.